Good afternoon. Welcome. So, shall we start with the roll call?
Certainly. Commissioner Banta?
Here.
Commissioner Bowthers?
Here.
Commissioner Cardoza?
Here.
Commissioner Donaldson?
Here.
Commissioner Kang has an excused absence this evening. Vice Chair Keller?
Here.
Chair Gunkel?
Here.
We have a quorum of six commissioners present.
Thank you. If there are any members of the public who would like to speak to items that are not on the agenda tonight, could you please come up? Nope. Okay. Then we will move to the action item recap.
Move the minutes.
One second.
Any opposed? And then the director's report?
All right. First, let me tell you what the city council has done since your last meeting. They've had two meetings, one on March 1st and one on March 15th. They haven't really had very much on their agenda that relates to the planning commission, but I will report on a few things that they've done that I think you may find of interest. On March 1st, they did approve the general plan annual report for submission to the state with the revisions that were recommended by the commission at your last meeting. On March 15th, they reviewed the city attorney's work program and they gave him direction as to what his priorities should be for the things that are on his plate. They also passed a resolution in opposition to the shipment of coal through the city of Emeryville to the port of Oakland. And in other news, just want to let you know that I will be attending the American Planning Association National Planning Conference in Phoenix during the first week of April, and I will report on it in the community development department's April progress report. And that concludes my report. I'd be happy to respond to any questions you may have.
Are there any questions? Okay. Thank you, Charlie. To disclosures of conflicts of interest and ex parte communications?
I'll be recusing myself for item 6B because of a potential conflict of interest, and I did meet with the Stanford Health Group on the 17th of this month.
I met with Andrew Baker and Tom Cox regarding 7601 Shellmount Street, and also with Doug Olson and Richard Sheng regarding the Stanford Health Center.
And I met with the same folks on the Stanford Health Center and also with the Anton... I spoke on the phone with the Anton people. And, one other item. Oh, the Lennar people about Sherman Williams site.
Yes, I spoke with...spoke on the phone with Anton Development regarding the Nady project and met with the Stanford Health Center team.
I spoke with the Stanford Health Center applicant, and I have a conflict of interest on the Nady site project because the company that employs me is working for Anton Development on some projects. So I'll have to recuse myself and leave the room.
And I met with Doug Olson from Stanford Health on March 15th. I had an in-person meeting with Tom Cox on the Nady site a couple of weeks before that date, and I had a phone call with Andrew Baker and his team this afternoon.
Thank you.
And I have no recusals.
Okay. So we're going to move to the public hearing. And for item 6A, I'd like to propose that we split this in half. So there'd be a 6A-1 and a 6A-2, 6A-1 being the EIR, and then 6A-2 being the project itself. Does anybody have any objections? In that case, we will start with item 6A-1, the Shellmount Street Residential Development Nady Project EIR.
Good evening, Chair Gunkel, Councilor Commissioners. I'm going to introduce Lynette Diaz of UPP, who has prepared the EIR for this project, and she will give you the presentation regarding the final EIR certification. So Lynette?
Thank you, Muru. And Lynette Diaz with Urban Planning Partners, and happy to be before you this evening. And we'll take you through an overview of the environmental review process for the proposed Nady project at 6701 Shellmount Street. So I'm going to try to keep this relatively brief and be available to answer questions and provide more detail if you would like, but a quick overview of the project that we evaluated in the EIR, the purpose of CEQA, an overview of the CEQA review process for this project, and then a summary of the environmental review findings from the draft EIR and the response to comments document, which together constitute the final EIR. The project, as was mentioned, is proposed by Anton Development. It's a 2.27 acre site at 6701 Shellmount Street, adjacent to the Ashby on-ramp, or off-ramp, rather. It's 186 units of multifamily rental units. The EIR studied 211 units. So since the time the draft EIR was published, the project has been refined and is fewer units. The EIR is still adequate in that the number of units were reduced, and so it's looked at a worst-case scenario. The project is five stories over two-story podium with parking. And here is an illustration of where the project site is, as I said, just south of the 80 off-ramp onto Ashby. So CEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act, I'm sure all of you are familiar with that. The main purpose of that is to essentially provide an information document so the city's decision-makers can make informed decisions, and any of the constituents or interested agencies can make informed comments on the document, understanding what the environmental effects of the project would be once it's built. So we're really looking at the net change of what's out there today compared to what's out there when the project would be built. We also look at the cumulative condition that looks at what's out there today plus what's anticipated to be out there in 20 years, and then the project being added on top of that. We look at ways to mitigate or avoid any of the significant impacts that are identified. We look at alternatives to the proposed project that would lessen any of the significant environmental impacts that were identified, not just any alternative, but the purpose of alternatives for CEQA is to look at alternatives that would reduce the environmental effects. And then, as I talked about, inform the public and decision-makers. The purpose of it is not to advocate for approval or not for approval of the project. It's simply to inform your decision-making process. So in no way is it intended, if an adverse impact is identified, that the project shouldn't be approved, or if there's no impacts identified, that it should be approved. The city of Emeryville is the lead agency for the project EIR and Urban Planning Partners. We were retained by the city, not by the project applicant, to prepare this document on behalf of the city. The project began initially in 2014, from an environmental review standpoint, anyway. And at that time, we prepared an initial study and a draft mitigated nug deck. It was a different project applicant at that time. After that was published, the city received some comments on it, and when the new applicant came in, there was a decision to go ahead and proceed with the preparation of an EIR in April of 2015. At that time, a notice of preparation that the city had decided an EIR would be prepared was published. That was really the scoping of the issues and decided what issues would be evaluated in the EIR and what would be just discussed briefly in the EIR. We got to publication. It was published and out there for a 45-day public review period, which is required by CEQA. We received eight comments on the draft EIR, and then we prepared responses to comments. And we are now in the step of the process where the city is considering certification of the EIR to certify whether it provides an adequate environmental analysis of the proposed project. So essentially, based on the CEQA requirements, does it provide you adequate information to make, to inform your decision? And then you get to consideration of the proposed project. So something that's always a little bit challenging for people to understand in the CEQA world is what is significant? Is any change that the project would result in, is that considered significant? And the answer to that is no. Basically, the city has, most cities have, significance criteria that establish thresholds for change. So, you know, always kind of a classic example is, you know, if a house is green and you're going to paint it yellow, you know, that's change. Some people might think it's bad, some people might think it's good. That doesn't, you know, in and of itself, that change doesn't constitute a significant impact. So the document details thresholds for each environmental topic area. They're pretty standard. The city uses the same, essentially the same criteria for their environmental documents. Sometimes there's some unique circumstance that may warrant a slightly more refined significance criteria, but in general, the city uses essentially, and your general plan policies inform that, as well as the CEQA guidelines from the state, and then professional recommendations as well. The standard in CEQA, we use a lot of acronyms. LTS is less than significant. MM is mitigation measure. SCA is somewhat a newer acronym that has been introduced, and it's standard condition of approval. The city has a set of standard conditions of approval that are put, applied to most projects. Oftentimes, those standard conditions of approval provide, would reduce a potential impact. So now, instead of introducing a new mitigation measure, we rely on the city's standard condition of approval that would be implemented in any event versus having a slightly worded mitigation measure that just confuses things. So the topics studied in detail in the EIR included transportation, air quality, noise, hazard, and hazardous materials. Each of these topics we evaluated, we recommended mitigation measures and/or standard conditions of approval that would all, for each of the topics, would reduce all of the impacts to less than significant level following the implementation of the recommended mitigation measures or your standard conditions of approval. We also looked at geology and soils, hydrology and water quality, greenhouse gas emissions, and global climate change. With greenhouse gas emissions, with your greenhouse, you're with your climate action plan and the product as proposed, there was no need for mitigation measure or standard conditions of approval. The project as proposed would not result in any significant impacts relative to hydrology and water quality and geology and soils. Mitigation measures and standard conditions of approval were required to reduce the impacts to a less than significant level. Topics that were not, did not include a detailed analysis, they did, they were analyzed in the initial study mitigated nug deck, and we essentially summarized those findings and didn't do a new detailed analysis for the topics of aesthetics, agricultural and forest resources, mineral resources, population and housing, public services, recreation, utilities, and service systems. We did look, as I mentioned in the beginning of my presentation, at cumulative analysis, which is really taking into account, you know, when the project's built, what's out there today is likely going to be different because things are changing, more development is being approved, so it takes into account those changes. So we also looked at that condition as well and found that the project would not significantly contribute to any cumulative impacts, to any significant cumulative impacts, I should say, because it's obviously going to contribute to some change. Alternatives evaluated, we looked at the no-project-no-build alternative, which is a requirement under CEQA. We also looked at the reduced project alternative and the maximum intensity hotel and residential alternative. Those all, you know, in this project, there was no significant impacts that could not be mitigated, and so, you know, we did, you still are required to look at alternatives, but this becomes more critical when you have significant unavoidable impacts for the project as proposed. And then you're required to identify the environmental superior alternative, and that was the reduced project alternative. Finally, the kind of summary of the EIR conclusions is that there's no significant and unavoidable impacts, and all impacts can be mitigated to a less than significant level. So after 45 days was up, we got comments in. As I mentioned, we got a total of eight comment letters, or I'm sorry, five comment letters on the draft EIR. We also received some verbal comments from the commissioners. We, CEQA requires that written responses to each of those be provided, and that is in your thinner document. That's in front of you, not your thick document. So we've provided written responses to each of those. There are some minor refinements to some of the mitigation measures relative to the hazards to bolster those a little bit more relative to the potential effects, potential effects on construction workers on the site relative to some of the RF radio frequency associated with adjacent radio towers. And so the comments we received were from East Bay Med. It's a pretty standard letter of just kind of coordinating with them as the process goes forward and building plans are submitted. From Caltrans, there was a letter, again, just kind of clarifying the process as it moves forward, if the city approves it and they go through building permit process. From the commissioners, there was some comments here. I think primarily these were clarifications, and these were all responded to in the comments. And so hopefully, when you read the responses to the comments letters, these addressed your comments and questions. And then we got two letters from Wendell, Rosen, Black, and Dean. This was regarding the radio tower communications. We reviewed them carefully. We also had an expert come in and advise us as well. And as I mentioned, in response to these comments, we did bolster a couple of the mitigation measures. They are included, those details are included in the section four of your response to comments document, and they primarily related to construction workers and the safety associated with them. We also got a letter from Union Pacific Railroad requesting us to consider the crossing, to close the crossing at 67th Street. Our construction, sorry, our traffic consultant looked closely at that, and the overall increase in peak hour trips at this crossing from the proposed project are really minimal. So they did not feel it warranted. They also discussed potentially a signal at 66th and Hollis that the city, it does meet signal warrants, although the impact from this project is relatively minimal, and the city does not feel that a signal would be beneficial there. And that's often the case, just, I mean, the signal warrant is one threshold, and then you have to look at all the other things and what's the result of putting a signal in there. And our traffic consultant, together with your engineering staff, felt like there would be more downsides to putting the signal in than upsides, and it would, it would cause a lot of rerouting and congestion in other areas. And so with that...
Can you go back a slide?
Sure.
What is this, the Union Pacific disagrees with quiet zone?
Oh, sorry about that. That is a good question. I need to refresh my memory on that one. I apologize. But I have it right here.
If I could just chime in?
Thank you, Charlie.
I believe what I recall reading that they said was that they don't like quiet zones. They don't think they're safe, but they are federal law, and if the city goes through the proper procedures to establish one, they have to abide by it. They just don't like it.
Yes, I found it. Sorry, I read the response, but I did not refresh my memory with the actual comment this evening. And so it's Union Pacific disagrees.
Can you just cite where you're reading so I can follow what you're reading?
Sure. It is two pages before page 48 because it's in the comment letter, and so those don't have pages number, page numbers, but it's letter B3, and it's comment 8. And it says, "Union Pacific disagrees with the quiet zone. Union Pacific believes quiet zones compromise the safety of railroad employees, customers, and the general public. While the railroad does not endorse quiet zones, it does not comply with provisions outlined..." It does comply with provisions outlined in federal law. So there's some controversy over quiet zones, but they are being approved, and there is support for them. Just differences of opinions, which often happen. Sure. Thank you for reminding me to go through that. So the final EIR did take into account the proposed materials relative to the radio wave effect, which was one of the comments mentioned. The text revisions, which I briefly mentioned, those you can find beginning on page 55 of the response to comments document, and the summary table is the first part, and so it really highlights the specifics of that, and you can really see that they're all primarily related to the safety of construction workers. So next steps is you can consider the findings relative to the EIR in front of you. You can ask me questions. And then you, you know, staff recommends that you move forward and certify the EIR and then consider the project. So I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff or staff consultants?
Did you have any other follow-up from Union Pacific Railroad after you responded to their comment?
We did not.
Thank you.
And I'll ask city staff to confirm that, but...
That's correct. I did not receive any further...
Thank you.
Any other questions?
And that is a fairly standard comment letter from Union Pacific.
Yeah, I'm looking at it, it looks like one.
Yeah. So...
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So that said, we'd like to open up public hearing. Are there any members of the public who'd like to speak on this item?
Yes, please.
I'm on it. Now, if I could remind you, after you speak, if you could go over and sign on the list over there.
And, excuse me, Chair Gunkel, I'd just like to confirm that speakers have a three-minute time limit this evening?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Shall I start?
Sure.
Thank you. My name is Paul Marx, and I do the engineering for FAM Radio Communications, and I'm here on their behalf to express their concerns, responding to the response to comment document on the draft EIR. While we feel that the revisions to the EIR with respect to radio frequency safety issues are moving in the right direction, the revised HAS-1A and HAS-1B mitigation measures included in the response to comments documents are not adequate to protect the construction workers and occupants from exposures to excessive levels of radio frequency electromagnetic fields, currents, and voltages. Construction workers and occupants should not be exposed to radio frequency energy levels that exceeds the levels prescribed by the Institute of Electrical and Electronic Engineers, that's the IEEE, to their safety standard, C95.1-2005, the standard for safety levels with respect to human exposure to radio frequency electromagnetic fields. As it's currently written, that the HAS-1A and 1B mitigation measures would only protect construction workers and occupants from RF exposure levels that would result in injury, that level of exposure is too permissive and is significantly higher than the exposure level allowed by the IEEE safety standard. The mitigation measures should be revised to limit construction workers and occupants to safe exposure levels as specified by the IEEE safety standard. We suggest that a qualified professional electrical engineer specializing in RF engineering and safety be consulted to assist with the revision of the mitigation measures. We also suggest that the city of Emeryville require the project developer retain such a qualified engineer to make measurements of the building when completed to verify compliance with the IEEE safety standard prior to permitting building occupancy. Mitigation measure HAS-1B states that environmental safety system should not be damaged, it states that the environmental safety, environmental and safety system should not be damaged by the, by the presence of the RF fields. We feel that the statement should be revised to include prevention of interference from those fields. Response to B1 states that the effects of construction equipment are considered less than significant. The effect of cranes on our transmission will be a function of the crane type and height. At this point, we don't know how tall those cranes are going to be or what type they are, so it's premature to conclude that the effects of the cranes will be less than significant. We have more concerns beyond this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other members of the public who would like to speak on this item? No? Then I'm going to close public hearing and go to Commissioner Comments.
I have no comments.
No comment.
The question about the, that was just raised by the public speaker regarding the radio waves, the city, as I understand it, directed the EIR consultant to retain an engineer to conduct a study to address these concerns. Is that correct?
Yes, and if I can refer the commissioners to page 28 of their response to comments document, in response to comment B14, if you, mitigation measure hazard 1B, you can see all that was added by the double underline text, and the last sentence of the double underline text, I'll read. Prior to the approval of building permits, all structural and building systems designed shall be reviewed by a qualified electrical RF professional to ensure that the hazard associated with the RF fields is addressed.
Is there any reason to assume that the engineer that you hired to conduct this study did not address all the issues that have been raised?
I don't believe so.
Thank you.
And I have no comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Move the EIR.
I'll second that.
Ready to vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Banta?
Aye.
Commissioner Bowthers?
Aye.
Commissioner Cardoza?
Aye.
Commissioner Donaldson is recused. Commissioner Kang is absent. Vice Chair Keller?
Aye.
And Chair Gunkel?
Aye.
Five ayes. The final environmental impact report is certified. This decision may be appealed to the city council within 15 days.
Thank you. So now we're going to move on to item 6A-2, which is the project itself, the Shellmount Street Residential Development Nady Project.
Okay. Good evening again. As we now know very well where the project is, 6701 Shellmount Nady Site. As you know, as you may recall, we've gone through two study sessions, and since the last study session in January, what the applicant has done is defer... And since the last study session in January, what the applicant has done is refined their design, their materials, refined their landscape plans. But the basic plan, the basic project program has remained the same. So I'll quickly go through that. Here you have the site plan. It's a little over two acres with 186 units. The project amenities include a roof terrace, a clubhouse, study room, fitness room. There's a bike shop on the ground floor as well. The unit mix is, as you can see in front of your screen, they do comply with the newish regulations, which require that studios be no more than 5%. One and two, two and three bedrooms need to be 50%, and three bedrooms need to be at least 15%. This is your circulation plan. You, Shellmount Street is on your right, right here. Entry to the garage podium is at this corner next to the building adjacent, which is the Expressions College. You enter in. The green lines basically show the vehicular access as well as the emergency access. The red lines show the pedestrian routes, and the blue lines are how the bikes would access the garage and the site in general. This is a little bit more detailed in terms of circulation plan. In the plans that were in your packet, every sheet has a note which kind of tells you how if any changes had been made from the previous study session. So that perhaps helped you along in trying to figure out how the project has changed from the last time you saw it. So on this plan, what they did add, and I'm just going to hit the main points, is that they included long-term lockers in the bike storage. You have it just right here. So it is two over five. This is the podium level. This diagram basically ensures, this was something that was discussed at the study session, that each unit that has an access to the courtyards has a direct access from that unit into the courtyard. So this kind of illustrates that feature. Flows four to six, they again made some revisions to include more light in certain units. They've identified the smoke stacks to be the exhaust vent tubes. It was something that came up when they showed you the barrel feature. And one of the commission comment was that it would be useful if they actually served some purpose. So they've identified that to be this. On the seventh floor, they have added direct access from the roof terrace, from the kitchen, the kitchen to the roof terrace. Here are your sections. The height of the building remains the same that you've been seeing. The top of, the very highest is a little under 82 feet. Bulk of the building is a little under 70 feet. So these are the revised and defined elevations. As noted in the staff report, they have refined it by doing a number of things. They've reduced the materials, the hardy board materials. They've increased a little bit of the brick. They have also refined the barrel feature to decrease the recess. And this was something that I pointed out at the last study session. So this elevation shows those details. And the applicant is going to, the architect is going to walk you through more on the different refinements that they have made. They have also ensured that the elevations and the renderings match the actual flow plans. And there are some, there's a condition of approval that ensure that very different variety of details are taken care of at the building permit stage. And this has been outlined in the staff report. In terms of the landscape plan, they have, the main change has been a result of the discussion with the fire chief, where the emergency vehicle access perimeter has to be now permeable concrete or permeable concrete unit pavels and not, and no other materials. So that's something they had to do. So that's the change there. They have refined the landscape plans for each corner and the podium, podium courtyards as well. And I'm going to let the applicant take, walk you through that. So in terms of conformity to land use policies, it is in the MUR district where multi-unit residential is allowed by right. They do need a use permit, however, for the single use. Our regulations say that any parcel which is more than one acre and less than five acres should have a mix of uses. And if they propose a single use, then certain findings have to be made. And the findings essentially say that, that this site, this particular site, a mix of uses is not viable. And we do believe this to be true. There is also a letter attached to the staff report from a real estate person who sort of specializes in leasing, retail, or commercial offices in, commercial space in the city and in the Bay Area. And his opinion was that this site is not the most appropriate space for non or a mix of users. In terms of residential density, they are proposing, they would need bonus points, as indicated. In terms of FAR, what they are proposing is allowed by right. The height is also, they would need bonus points. As has been discussed in the past study sessions, under the new regulations, an applicant has the option of either following the city's density bonus points or the state density bonus points. And under the state system, they can provide 10% of very low-income units or five, I'm sorry, 10% of low-income units or 5% of very low-income units. And the applicant is proposing to provide at the very low level. And that turns out to be in this, in this project, to be eight units at very low-income In terms of parking, they are, I mean, the required is between 149 to 245. Proposed is pretty much close to the maximum permitted. So that's 241. In terms of bike parking, the required is nine short-term and 186 long-term. They provide more than needed long-term and also about double the short-term. The staff report, just to make, and this is a change that they have proposed since the writing of the staff report, is the provision of short-term bicycle parking spaces. In your packet, you have it as 28 spaces. That has been revised to 18 spaces. And it is still more than our, you know, requirement, which is nine. As part of our new regulations, the planning commission needs to approve their TDM plan as well. And the goal of the TDM plan is to ensure that the average vehicle miles traveled by residents in the city, in, by residents of the project is less than the average citywide VMT. The citywide VMT is 28, and the project is going to be generating less than that at about 13. And their TDM plan have, have identified certain measures, which, which is to ensure that the project VMT stays well below the citywide VMT. So some of the measures that have been outlined in the staff report and are in front of you is designation of an onsite transportation coordinator to manage the program and be a point of contact for residents, provision of information packages, packets, sort of outlining the bike, pedestrian, and transit travel options, offer one of the free bike, free Bay Area Bike Share membership per unit. Also provision of a transit kiosk onsite. And this is a requirement. They will be giving us an annual monitoring survey of residents of the development to, to measure the success of this TDM plan. We do have open space requirements. These have been now clearly defined. And as noted in the staff report, they exceed minimum requirements. In terms of design guidelines, there are two big portions of our design guidelines. One is the general design guidelines, and then there's the family-friendly design guidelines. In terms of the general design guidelines, here, these are a few of the guidelines that are just sampling of them, which the project complies with. They're all detailed in your resolution as well as the staff report. And in terms of the family design guidelines, as we had introduced this to you before, we had developed a checklist to kind of try, to help us and you to figure out whether a project complies with the various guidelines. And the information that we, the guidance that we got from you was that the goal would be to obtain an overall of all applicable guidelines per unit type of at least three and ideally of four and five. And the checklist, you've seen this before as well, at the previous study session, kind of goes through each different types of unit type. And at the bottom, you have the average. So the overall average range is from a low of 3.4 to a high of 4.1, therefore being higher than three and, and some of them being close to 4.1. Sorry. Oops, 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 oops. This is not what I was planning to show you. In addition to the use permit and the, and the design review, the project also requires a tree removal permit. Two trees along Shellmount propose to be removed. We do have our standard condition of approval, which requires the applicant to install replacement trees of equal cumulative diameter of the trees approved for removal, as well as payment of replacement value. So this is pretty standard condition. So that concludes my presentation. And we are recommending approval for three things. One is the use permit for residential-only building. One is the major design review, review for a new building, and then the tree removal permit. I would now like to take your attention to the memo that I distributed at the beginning of, and walk you through that. So these are some changes to the conditions of approval. So on the first page, the first one is pretty much a typo or a minor revision that affects the correct date of the landscape plans. The second condition, which is condition 2.4.5, we've corrected the numbering of this. And also, we have worked with the applicant to kind of refine the language of this condition. And if there are any questions regarding that, then I would be, we would be happy to respond to that. But that's, was arrived in association with, with consultation with the applicant. On the second page, condition 5, 4.5, that is again, just a cleanup. Then the condition below that regarding parking, that's what I was mentioning to you, the bicycle parking. The, they have revised their short-term parking from 28 to 18. And then they have given us sheets, revised sheets that correspond and make that, show that. The lastly is a fee chart. The fee chart is essentially a note, as they are going to be providing onsite affordable units, they would not be subject to payment of the affordable housing fee. So that revision is simply just clarifying that. So that concludes my presentation. If there are any questions, would be happy to answer. The applicant, like I'd mentioned, does have a presentation as well.
So I just want to ask a procedural question. When is the proper time for me to bring up questions regarding items of conditions of approval that I don't see in the report? Would that be now, after the presentation, for comments?
Maybe after the presentation. And after.
Yeah, during deliberations.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you.
Okay. Let me see.
Actually, I have one question.
Sure.
Maru, there was a condition that you noted in one of your slides about the removal of, I guess it was the grasscrete by, by the fire department. And it was to be replaced with porous paving, I think it was. And you know what the reasons are why the fire department was not in support of the grasscrete?
Well, the current fire chief believes that they don't, they're not sufficient for their needs. We have kind of discussed this issue with her several times. But she feels that the proposed materials are more reliable.
So is it, is it a question of weight of the emergency vehicles, not fearing that there's not going to be sufficient support for them?
That appears to be her belief.
Because the product is rated for emergency vehicles?
We mentioned that to her, but, I mean, I have no other answer other than she, she does, she does not want the grasscrete. She wants the permeable concrete. And she's the fire chief.
Okay. Well, there may be other reasons perhaps to do with the, the members of the fire department walking on the grasscrete when it's wet or something like that. I don't know. But the, but the issue of load-bearing capacity, that the product actually will support the vehicles if necessary.
Are there any other questions for staff? Thank you. Would the applicant like to present?
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Andrew Baker from Anton Development. Thank you for having us here tonight. We've, everyone's very familiar with this project. We've been through several study sessions. And we're here to move this project forward. I guess first of all, I'd like to, well, thank you, Maru. Excellent presentation. I think we're all very familiar with this now, this project. You know, first off, we, we're very appreciative and grateful of the collaboration that we've had with, with the city and staff. You've provided a lot of direction and leadership, and, and that really helps make a development great. So we really appreciate that interaction. We truly do. We've made the modifications that we've all talked about, and I'm going to let the team address those, you know, primarily some landscape and architectural modifications. The team is here, both Tom and Gary from the landscape and architect are both here, as well as, I think the RF issue is, is put to bed, but we do have an RF expert here, if there are any questions on that as well. You know, we, this project is going to, we're proud of this project. It's got a lot of these amenities that folks really want. We're doing the EV stations, we're doing extra, we're going to do bike share and have the bike shop be open to the public and a lot of public access to our site. There's going to be the fitness area that's going to be open to the public. Just expanding, you know, I was over there on the way to this commission hearing, and it's tired up there. It's, it's an old dilapidated building. And, you know, the community wants change. We want change. And, and we're happy to, to be part of that solution. We really are. You know, the, the sky deck's going to be fantastic. Emeryville, this is a, this is a city that should be proud. I mean, this is, this project is going to have fantastic views of San Francisco, beautiful sky deck up there. And it really, you know, the community deserves better than, than what's up there now. And we're really happy to be part of the change. We're going to be in the community for the long term. And we really appreciate your support. You know, the other amenities, we talked about, the dog, it'll be a dog-friendly, you know, community, you know, on down to the transit passes and all the other stuff we've talked about. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Tom Cox, our architect, and then we'll be here for questions, should you have them. Thank you very much.
Well, good evening. I'm really going to miss you guys. Tonight, we're here to present some of the changes that we've made in response to concerns and thoughts that were presented to us over the past two study sessions. And as Andrew mentioned, I, I think we're very grateful to commission, staff, and Arnold, the city's architect consultant, for being active participants in our process. And so I'd like to run through those pretty quickly for you. We've been here a number of times. If there's any questions, feel free to stop me. So what we heard is improved courtyard access at the podium level, increase the size of the private patios at the townhouses on the ground, provide private bike lockers, increase visibility of the bike shop, minimize the use of the hardy panel and the checkerboard look, allow for a more natural light to penetrate the A4 unit, the redesign for a better family-friendly living space on the C2. I'll describe that a little more in detail here in a minute. Revise the dining room at the C3 to allow curved wall outline of the exterior without the deep set. Provide gathering spaces for tenants, identify functions for the smoke stacks, redesign the trash room to minimize encroachment into the corridor. And it also should say to provide visual access through the study room to light.
And just to go back up there, you missed one.
Sure.
I just want to make sure it's something you are considering. Is the double vanities in the master on the, the one plan revised? Combined master bath and closet?
Oh, I missed that one.
Yeah. So you're going to do that?
Yes. Actually, we didn't do it, I was going to skip over. No, we did do it. I missed that one. So very quickly, we have provided a large amount of direct access to the podium from the corridors. You can see pretty clearly that we have access points, north, south, east, and west, and to the northern podium area. There's also, and it amazes me that we missed these things, if you notice the very small courtyard on the upper left side, we have always had a door there. It has never showed up on one of our plans. We have direct access to that courtyard also. Secondly, the larger patios, I think that this is a real enhancement for those ground-level townhouses. We've increased those two to three feet in depth, and in some cases, in the width, and they're now much larger, and we've increased all of those. Bike storage, we investigated bike storage lockers pretty heavily. We picked, this isn't necessarily the last word on bike storage lockers, but we picked a really good utilitarian, friendly, lots of storage, easy-to-get-to bike locker, and we're proposing installing those bike lockers in the bike storage area adjacent to the bike shop. There was a central area, and I believe it was Chairman Gunkel who had mentioned, I believe it was, that we had blocked off that space with some kind of storage or mechanical or MPOE types of spaces, and how nice it would be if we took those out and just made it a place where people could gather. We have light and air coming in from all sides, so we, you know, we did. We took it out, and now we've created a very symmetrical center gathering place for people to just bump into each other and have a conversation, or just to hang out. On the right side, we relocated the trash room and resized it to provide a clear point of access all the way through the corridor. We're putting a glass door in the study room to allow light into that corridor also. And the smoke stacks, we really wanted to find a use for those. We didn't want to lose the smoke stacks, they're a pretty nice addition to the building itself, and so we have found uses for those smoke stacks, and they will come up on the elevations here in a second. Couple of quick things, we took off the orange balcony, that was like a holdover from previous life. We also pushed the windows out to the outer edges of those, of the turret or the cylinder on the corner, and those windows are now pretty much flushed out and provided a much larger area within the dining room of those units. We also reduced the amount of hardy, and the concern, I think, with the commission was the checkerboard patterning, so we've reduced that also. These are the materials, those have not changed. I apologize, colors on slides aren't very good, but the colors are rich and are in keeping with our former presentation. Same with the windows, metal louvers, doors, brick, all pretty much the same as the previous. One comment we got was on our A4 unit, and it's an inside corner unit, and it does cause concern for many. It actually performs very well because it's a very private unit, but getting a lot of light and air into that unit has always been a question mark, I think, that we've been dealing with. And so as a result, we pulled the wall of the living, dining, kitchen back, and as a result of that, we were allowed more room on that end-wall condition. We have about 10 feet of glass on that wall now, and so the door is glass, the windows are glass, it's operable, you can get lots of light and air into that space. There is also glass over the top of the TV that allows shared light to come into the This is an interesting unit. I know that we talked and talked with plant, with our, with our, with the staff and with the city's architect consultant about family-friendly. We think we've hit a home run on pretty much all of the family-friendly criteria for this project, but this unit came up two or three times, and some comments were made, and we thought, you know what, we've gone a long distance here, why not take it to the goal line? Using a small football metaphor there. And so we looked at the unit again, and one of the comments was that the living room didn't seem quite big enough for the numbers of people in the family. So if you notice this unit, we niched the living room back. We took a little bit of space out of the bedroom. It's really inconsequential for that bedroom, and it gives that, that living room more space, and it niches the TV into the wall, and it eases up the circulation and the movement around and the perception of that space. We also took the door, which was almost immediately in the, in the living room, and moved it over about five to six feet. We did that for two reasons. One is to get it out of the living room area. Two was to get that door closer to the doors that the kids are in, and it eased up, again, the circulation for that space. We also redesigned the bathroom and repositioned the closet, so there's a better sense of entry into that bedroom. This is the turret or the cylinder that's on the corner of the building, and if you remember, we had about, up to about a two-foot recess on those windows, and we pushed those out, and as you can see, that is a adequate, more than adequate dining area, pretty exciting space when it's all done. The addition of the double sinks, little re-thinking about how that bathroom worked on the townhouse units, and we were able to capture a double sink in the master suite. So what we did, the list is what I just read, I'll try not to, I don't want to go through the whole list again. Essentially, we went through everything we heard, we checked off all of the items. I think we made a concerted effort to come back to you with great solutions to a great project, and we look forward to approval and moving forward. Gary from Gazardo is going to walk through the landscape. I know we had some thoughts on landscape also, and so I'd like to turn this over to Gary if I could. Thank you.
Good evening. Gary Lehman with the Gazardo Partnership. Glad to be here this evening. I'd like to first look at the ground plane area and then go up onto the podium areas, look at the changes we've made to the courtyard spaces. Here you see the overall plan. I'd like to do is to look first at the street frontage. There are a number of comments here we were able to respond to. We have new street trees all along this frontage here, cork oak trees is what we're specifying right now. We think there'll be a nice stately tree, really beautiful tree to replace those two that are being removed out along the frontage here. New public sidewalk, new bicycle parking at several locations strategically located along the frontage, as well as new streetlights along this whole frontage here, consistent with the city's design guidelines. So we think this is a great frontage that really will complement the new building architecture that's present there. Going over to the corner area here, we were able to double the size of the dog play space here, and to take it out of the linear configuration, which was present at one point, make it more of an informal space that can be really used for a lot of variety of play. We have a double gate here to make sure that the dogs are well-contained as they come in and out. There's a small link, chain link fence that runs the entire edge, as well as a dense hedge planting to keep kids and the dogs separate from each other. We've also introduced, we got very creative, I think, with the space that we have in this area and with the whole EVA area, and looking for ways to create play amenities that serve at a lot of different parts of the community. We have a climbing wall that we've introduced here. This is a rubberized surface paving, and we've found that the climbing wall elements for kids are really very popular. We have PlayStations here with play features that can be incorporated into this area, and we've also introduced a chalk wall along this area here, and we've even fit in badminton court within this space, thinking we can have the posts on the side here, and to be able to have badminton play there. The posts would be removable, and we think that would be a real popular amenity. Just really tried to think of the diverse kind of components we can add to this space and really make it a fun space for a variety of people to be able to enjoy. And lots of seating within those areas, too, different aspects, looking north and north and west and east as well, so that people can choose a place to sit that really fits the weather and what their interest is. You can see that a section through that corner there shows all these different elements, the dog play space, the fence with the hedge, the play equipment, the badminton area, as well as bench seating, which occurs off to the side there. We also looked at this area up here where we've taken, this, I think, is a wonderful public amenity that includes a bicycle repair station, equipment for working outdoors, stepped seat walls that will allow for sort of interaction within this area, and this is all open to the public frontage. It's well-lit with pole lights in this area here, so I think it'll be a very inviting space there. A low fence that's mostly transparent would be here, so it'll have good visibility, and I think some real nice amenities that public will be able to enjoy.
Can I ask you a quick question about that?
Sure.
Last diagram. We had, Charlie, you and I had spoken about the fact that a portion of this is shown outside of the property line. Is that something that's been worked out with the city or Caltrans?
No, we haven't really talked to them about that. I believe this drawing is an error. I think the property line, I believe the property line is the curved line.
That's right.
That's shown there. And so the stuff that's shown in purple that's outside that curved line is either on City Right Of Way or Caltrans Right Of Way, I believe.
I believe it's City. There, but yeah, that would be something that we would like to try and do, just to open that up to make that, you know, highly visible and highly useful for, for people who are using the bike path as well as walking in the neighborhood, as well as residents. You can see in this area here, these little faint dash lines here are fall zones relative to the play equipment, so there's pull-up bars, sort of a bench press, a sit-up area. These do not have to be discreet from each other, so there's, there are opportunities to be able to compress those together, and if we have to abide by that arc, we'll still be able to get a number of these elements together in this space.
Before we move on, I see some concern on Andrew's face, and to me, this is an important element, so...
I do, thank you very much. I'd like to understand whether the applicant is proposing to build part of the project in City Right Of Way.
That is what we're proposing, yes. This is part of the public amenity here, you know, and we wanted to enhance that for the public use. If that's not, if that's not something you want to do?
We hadn't really discussed that. I assumed it was an error in the drawing, and if it is in the public right of way, it will require an encroachment permit.
Absolutely, Charlie, you're correct. So we've, I think all of us have done this before, where you shave a little to improve the flow of a, you know, return pocket or, you know, so if there's a little giving and taking, and it nets out on this, on this description, it doesn't look like that it's perfectly even, but to the extent that you would like to smooth out an edge or clean up a PL, that would be fine with us, but we're, we're open to either way.
Well, any improvements in the public right of way need...
An improvement, pretty much.
Well, if for the development or for, like, street? If you're putting amenities in the public right of way for the project, meaning part of the, kind of the play area?
Does the city, does the city have a parcel map, so we can just see if this is actually an issue?
Parcel map?
Do you have a parcel, to see whether this sliver piece in the corner that's being drawn, if it's actually, like you're suggesting, on a public right of way? Can we just confirm that?
Well, yeah, there's a, there's a survey.
Which page are you looking at?
Page C1.
Thank you.
I believe that's a survey. Well, it says existing plan. It was prepared by a surveyor, although it's not...
Andrew, while we're looking, can we kind of just cut to the chase? So this is a exercise area?
No, parcel map won't help.
Correct, public.
Yeah. So this is a develop, an item developed by the developer for...
Why can't they just say it's a mistake?
Sorry, go ahead.
The community.
This is, this is an exercise area. It's not a play court, but it's an exercise area, and it's, it's created for the development and the residents, as well as a public amenity. So to my way of thinking, I'm looking at this as we would look at a sidewalk. The sidewalk for this project encroaches on the public, so if it takes a permit, an encroachment permit or whatever, I don't think that I would have a problem approving that.
I'd just like to clarify, is this exercise area intended for the use of the general public?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh.
And that will be a condition of approval that I will require for my, for my approval.
And we could make this even easier, that to the extent the city doesn't want it to be outside the PL, if that, if this curved line is accurate, and it looks like we're giving a little there and cleaning up the edge there, we can leave it at your discretion, that's fine with us.
Okay. Thank you.
But my concern is, okay, if the developer doesn't do anything with that property, is the city going to spend the money, or is this going to be a vacant piece of land?
Oh, I, you know, this, I, to my point before, I'm not sure if this is Caltrans or City of Emeryville, because this is right where the off-ramp from I-80 meets Shellmount Street, and there's a lot of landscaping within this right of way between their property line and the actual off-ramp. So where the end of Caltrans Right Of Way is and where City Right Of Way begins, I don't know. I would say if it turns out to be Caltrans Right Of Way, then you're going to need an encroachment permit from Caltrans, which is probably more difficult to get than one from us.
Correct.
But so that, it needs to be explored. And I would also say that the Ashby-Shellmount interchange is proposed to be completely rebuilt, as you probably know, and that has now been, I believe, fully funded by Measure BB. It's going to take a number of years, obviously, to happen. I'm not sure if those improvement plans are going to affect this area or not. They might, and if they did, then obviously anything built there now would have to be removed.
So for approval of this project, we're going to need at some point, I'm going to need at some point, a determination of if and or what will happen on this.
Yeah, I think we could probably try to address it with conditions of approval.
Yeah, okay.
And furthermore, for additional clarification, we are working with Caltrans to, to the extent that, that we can improve their, some of the landscape on those eucalyptus trees, it's a process, it takes some time. But they've been...
Thank you.
They've been collaborative and open to talk, so that's a process we're engaged in currently.
Thank you. I didn't mean to sidetrack us so much.
So just some examples of some of the outdoor amenity facilities we'd like to be able to place in here, as well as some of the seat wall elements, the bike repair, the nice lighting in that space, and there's the fence along the property line there. Within the emergency vehicle access area as well, we were having to sort of reimagine this a bit. We were originally thinking we were going to have some, some lawn in that area, and pushed hard to try and get that, and believe that we'll be able to continue to have that dialogue with the fire department and, and try and work in some softer surfaces within, within this space. But having said that, we wanted to look at this and see, how can we sort of reimagine this space to be a more active, playful environment if it ends up being a hard-surface space, and sort of look at it from that perspective? So we looked at, first of all, trying to make it visually interesting. We have a lot of different textures here. This is all permeable concrete and interlocking paving stones that are all permeable, so it's a self-treating stormwater treatment area with drainage pipes underneath it. We looked at having a nice-looking decorative fence along the edge, which I'll show you here in a minute. We envisioned hardscape surfaces, we start thinking of what sort of things you would find in a playground, and think about how kids might be able to use this. You know, it's great to have a level place that you can actually learn to ride a bicycle in. I don't have that in my neighborhood. It was a real challenge and sort of deftifying to teach my daughters to ride on a slope. It was a real challenge and sort of deafifying to teach my daughters to ride on a slope, but they made it. You know, but so, you know, in some ways, you know, we want to try and find ways to be able to utilize this space and really create things which are, are fun and engaging, that really give people a place to be able to do something that's special, something they might do at school, play with their friends. We were looking at having a nice transparent fence along the property line edge, along with a gate at the two entry areas. We're planning on planting flowering vines on these fences as well, so the foreground lower views would be blocked, but the long-range views, as you're walking around, would be preserved. Going up onto the podium areas, I'm going to start here and sort of work around numerically at the different spaces. One of the things we talked about was looking at what the material palette is in this space, and so we've defined what the paving materials are. We have some wood decks in this center space here. We have interlocking paving stones for the private patio areas, so this whole area here is essentially permeable and level and flat, and very rich use of materials throughout with a variety of colors, give you interesting patterns and textures that sort of helped to reinforce the idea of these distinctive outdoor rooms. So within these spaces, really nice amenities. We have a barbecue cooktop, community table, overlapping or overhanging canopy element. We've been able to enlarge the planter areas and to be able to incorporate larger plant material into those spaces. There used to be fire ladder access pads in a lot of these areas. We've worked with the fire marshal, and those are not required any longer, so we're able to get more vegetation into these areas to create more separation between the private patios and the common open space. We have great overlook opportunities here, looking over the EVA to the north. So a lot of really nice elements have been incorporated programming-wise into this space, and we think that this will really draw people out to be able to enjoy being in community. One of the things we thought would be fun would be to have a, a screen that could drop down from a trellis element. On this north side, we were also looking at incorporating heating elements within the overhead structures, so that it creates a warmer ambient temperature there. All the lighting for these courtyards is all low-level and very specifically directed. Most of the, most of the walkway areas are lit with wall lights that are cast into the planter walls, as well as downlights which are in the trellis, which have collars to them, so the light source itself are shielded. It won't be a glare issue for the neighbors. And I think that these sort of elements will really create outdoor spaces that people will really be drawn to. Going to this courtyard here, again, rich palette of paving materials, wood decking, artificial turf is being used. In this area here, we've sort of created a playful, sort of a beanbag seating area here, where things could be moved around, overhead trellis, you know, fire pit, outdoor dining, cooking areas, game tables, outdoor dining areas, new seating elements, as well as evergreen trees to help create some real separation and privacy between the units. Again, the use of downlights within the trellis elements. Nice foliage that's helping to separate the units from each other and the private spaces from the common areas. Going back to the north side here, again, rich use of, of interlocking paving stone materials here, set on pedestals, outdoor fire pits, soft seating, vegetation around, separating the private from the, the public areas. And this is an example of these, of these wall-mounted light fixtures here that provide the low-level ambient lighting for those spaces. We have patio fences which separate the courtyards from the common areas. The overall height of these fences is 42 inches high. We're looking at a sort of a random layering of wood members with sort of narrow gaps between them, to both give you some sense of presence of people being on the inside there, but also creating a nice level of privacy. All the, all the courtyard spaces have gates which keep control over the access in and out of those spaces in all cases. Finally, this last courtyard, again, similar palette of materials, you know, used in a variety of ways, that they have some distinctive character within the spaces. Again, overhead trellises, specimen trees, outdoor, community dining tables, barbecues, game tables, artificial turf with ping pong, various play games that we can bring out. People can enjoy using those spaces, comfortable wood benches, high-end materials throughout. We think that this is going to be a really inviting space. Going to the last space, the over, upper floor, the terrace has, again, soft seating, more cafe-type seating, dining, cooking table, really nice amenities, and I can really picture people being up here, looking out over the marina, looking towards Mount Tam. It'd just really be a spectacular environment for people to enjoy. Look forward to, any questions you have regarding the presentation?
I have a quick question. So back to the EVA and the question that was already raised regarding the grass crete. Did you, I think there's an, I don't know, I always get them confused, it's like a grass pave. There's some options where there's actually reinforced pavers where the grass grows through them, but there's a, you know, and I've had, and I know that's been approved, not necessarily in Emeryville, but by other fire departments. Did you explore those kinds of options, or, you know, paved strips with grass between? Just looking, you know, seeing this as an entire strip of hardscape around the entire perimeter of the building, wondering what options we might be able to find to soften that up.
We, we had a number of conversations using a lot of different product lines from, you know, sort of the, the web plastic components, which we've used in a lot of emergency vehicle accesses, which allow turf to be planted right through it. We've used, we, we proposed that. We proposed some actual precast concrete units, the Hastings block that has a very continuous planting area within there, and, you know, where the tires would be touching the concrete. We looked at, you know, concerns relative to how do you see the emergency vehicle access? How is it differentiated from the surrounding landscape areas? We thought about perimeter bands and, you know, creating an edging treatment there that'd be very visible, so that it'd be very clear where the road was. We looked at also looking at placing the sidewalk as one of those edges, so it was a super-clear, you know, sort of outside lane, and say, you know, you have that left tire on the sidewalk, you know, you're good. So we looked at a lot of different options in terms of trying to make it both identifiable and look at engineering solutions that we thought were really solid. As you said, we have a lot of, of the municipalities which have allowed us to be able to use plant material like lawn, along with these engineered structures over in engineered subgrays. And you get, you'd get 70,000, you know, PSI ratings on these things, so, you know, we thought we were going to be able to get there. We weren't be able, we weren't able to get there in conclusion at this point. We'd like to continue to explore that, because we would like to see some softer environments out there. But we didn't want to propose something that we knew didn't have the blessing of the fire marshal at this time. We felt like that would be disingenuous, so we're showing what we think is a more creative response, trying to make the best of what we have here, trying to activate that hardscape and make it truly useful.
Thank you. I do have one more question for the applicant. The, I appreciate that you opened up the center corridor kind of gathering area, but is there a reason that we still don't have the halls lining up or the walls on either side? Seems like they're like a foot or less off.
That's a really good question. They looked like they were on to me. I'm going to go back. While I'm doing that, I owe you an explanation. The explanation is the smokestacks.
Oh, yes.
I never told you what they're for. The smokestacks at the front of the building are to ventilate the trash chutes, so we have vertical ventilation and fans to keep those ventilated. The smokestacks at the, at the back or the middle of the project, those are intended to be fresh air intake for the garages. So we utilize those as functional stacks, they're not just decoration. Okay.
So if you can, I mean, it's even more clear on our set, but the sort of north-south axis there is offset by maybe a foot or so. Just seems strange and really love to see that pulled in. You can also see it over at the two courtyards to the east of that. Their, their entrances, the entrances to the two courtyards are just offset from each other by maybe a foot or so.
We'll happily look at that. We, we like order, and the ones on the entrances to the courtyards look fairly easy to adjust. The ones in the center, I would hate to shrink them down to bring them into symmetry, but we will certainly look at that. I do understand your thought.
It looks like the offset was created by the property line at the upper right corner.
Yeah, I agree. The orange unit in that picture in the top, I agree with Buzz, that it's touching the line, and if you look, the entire top half of the main hallway, if, to Brad's point, if it moved all a foot and a half to the right, all of those things would actually be symmetrical going north-south, but it would then push the top corner unit there over the property line, it's literally touching the line.
I mean, this is assuming that all of the units have to be 100%, you know, all the type A ones or whatever have to be 100% the same and not one foot off from each other.
It's true.
Can I ask you a question, Chair Uncle, is, why is it, to me, space is more valuable in a unit than in a corridor? I live in a building with a really long corridor. I don't pay much attention to what's in the corridor, whether it lines up, and I think for me, square footage of my house is much more important than taking a foot off it just to line the walls up in a space that I pass through. So I think if we're asking them to...
I'm hoping it's not just a space where people pass through. I'm hoping that we're creating a community here and that this becomes a place where people who know each other run into each other, talk to each other, and so we're not just focusing, you know, on the internal units, but also the community spaces.
I think our obligation, you know, during our process together is for us to look at it, and, and try and solve that and make it symmetrical if we can, and if not, we'll do our best.
I mean, I'm sure for sake of ceiling treatment and things like that, too, it's going to be to your benefit, try to figure out a way to make it symmetrical.
I think as architects, we are very conscious of that, but most people aren't.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for the applicant?
Tom, Mr. Cox, I got a couple of questions for you. I'm, I'm a little late to the party, I wasn't part of the study sessions, but I had some questions for you about your units. And I had an opportunity to look at this with you at my office when you came by to present the project to me. You have a unit number A2 on, it's illustrated on sheet A2.4. It's A2. It's between construction lines 13 and 14.
A2, yes, sir.
On the north side there. And it's illustrated actually on sheet A4.19 in your rendering, and it's shown as a, as a broad brick wall.
Oh, yes.
And the comment I think I made to you at the time you presented it to me was that that seems like a, one of your prime view units potentially, and that that, you could actually benefit from having more fenestration on that wall. So that's just a comment I wanted to bring up to the, to the...
I actually brought that comment up to our, our team, and they, they agreed, so we will affect that.
So continuing on with my little instant survey here, between, on the same plan page, between construction lines eight and seven, you show the stacks, the smokestacks, that you are proposing, I think, for ventilation purposes?
Yes.
And they, they descend down into the maintenance room below. I think that's at level two, correct?
Yes.
So the position of the stacks right there, I agree, the stacks are a very nice element on the building. Those stacks, of course, are also making it impossible for that unit B1 to enjoy what would also be an excellent view. And they are also at the end of the hallway, where I think you have some glass?
Yes.
Which is a wonderful element to have in any apartment building, is to have glass at the end of the hallway, but it is a great view of the smokestacks, which is perhaps not the, not, not everything that it could be. So my question to you is, could those smokestacks be relocated between construction line nine and eight and be oriented in an east-west direction as opposed to the north-south direction, and still land on the maintenance room and perform the function that you have assigned to them?
Effectively behind the restrooms, or the restroom of that A2 unit.
Behind, on the north side of unit A2, right.
Yes. Certainly look at that. I don't disagree. I think it's a good opportunity, and if we can do that, it makes a better unit.
Okay. And then finally, you mentioned that you improved unit A2, I'm sorry, A4, you got it so there's more light coming in. And just sticking on this page, I think it's unit A4 between constructions line 13 and 12, down in the, the southern, southwest courtyard, or the, the southern courtyard that's the westernmost. You see the unit there, A4?
Yes.
And next to it is unit A2. A2 has a window on its north side that looks pretty much directly onto the, the deck of unit A4.
I don't think that's a good idea. I think that one should be moved, yes.
Yeah, okay. So those were just some of the comments I had. And then the other comment I think that I addressed when, when we, you had our meeting with us, was the issue of signage on the front of the building, making it crystal clear to people where they should go in order to park. Is, is that part of your application at this time, or is that going to be a subsequent?
I think we heard you loud and clear, but I don't believe it's part, signage isn't part of the application, so it'll be coming back.
Great. Thank you very much.
Are there any other questions for the applicant?
Just for the landscape, that, on south side that we're talking about, we're, we're talking about pavers and glass and stuff. The thing I was wondering, on the flip side of wanting grass and et cetera there, with the current shared property that's to the south, having, it's just a sheer wall and et cetera, what is the, the drainage and the, the moisture going to be? Because what I can see, because you're between two tight buildings there, that the light getting into that space is going to be fairly minimal, so I see whatever we do there in terms of planting and having irrigation, that it's going to be a place where it's always going to be wet. Because where I live, we have a nice lawn in front of our house, but it's also built over a concrete cap, so the lawn out there is like always wet, so it's really not a place that we can play, take our dogs or things like that, because, and I'm just seeing, this space is very narrow between two large walls. I'm just wondering what, on the flip side of wanting greenery there, how viable of a play space is it going to be if it's always wet? Is that something you've looked at? Is that potentially a problem?
Yes, I started thinking about where would be the choice area, if we could get some lawn in some of those areas, where would we want to put it? And I think the, the sweet spot is to try and find larger blocks of areas that could be turf, so it's more useful, it's not just strips of grass, but, you know, more of a field of grass with a paving edge. And I saw that, I'm not showing here, but, there we go. I actually was looking at these panels up here as being what some of the more attractive areas, both because they get some light and particularly afternoon light, they get some good breezes, so some good air circulation in that space, and I thought that that would be more viable from a turf standpoint. I think that all these areas were, there's not going to be any water being deposited onto them, you know, they aren't drainage fields. All the stormwater treatments occurring against the building walls here, and so really the only rainfall is what you're getting directly from the sky. These spaces, I think, will also be interesting, though, in that the, the roof of this structure is lower, considerably lower than this building here. There's going to be a lot of reflected light that's coming in here, so I don't picture this as being a dark alley. I think it'll actually have some, some nice animated qualities to it.
Great, thank you, I needed that.
I have a couple of questions for you, Gary. In the back corner... In the back corner where the dog park is?
Mm-hmm.
There's now a eight-foot climbing wall?
Yes.
What is the, what, if any, issues are there with the safety of a wall that's the property line wall as well? I mean, you climbed, I'm not familiar, so help me. Like you climbed to the top of the eight-foot wall. Can the child go over the wall?
I'm going to pull up an image here.
Yeah, that one.
Yeah.
Okay. So can the child get to the top and go over that wall?
No. There would be, these handholds would be held down so that they're low enough where essentially you have a free zone. You know, this is not the perfect example of that. But what you'd do is you'd hold down the grab bar elements so that you can only get a certain vertical distance up. And what we've done is we've worked with climbing wall specialists. There's a field where people do this and we like to collaborate with them because we're using their learning curve in terms of seeing what's appropriate for age groups, the type of durability of the products as such that makes it both safe from a climbing perspective and also from a fall perspective. So we would hold back, these higher elements would not exist.
Do you know how much?
So you would have effectively a guardrail at the top of it that would keep kids from going over the top.
How much are you holding that back?
That's where I would want to work with the consultant to get the benefit of their experience, but probably, probably at least three feet.
So if, okay. I just wonder the utility of a feature like that, that if it's only five feet of climbing, its usefulness, I'm just thinking about that right now, I guess. I didn't, and this is a new element you've put in. I haven't thought about it, I guess. The other question I have is, it says, I have a couple of questions. In the dog park itself, you have a protective planter pot around the tree that's in there?
Yes.
Why?
We are working right now on a dog play space for the SPCA. And one of the things we found is that it's desirable to have trees and shade and such, but the trunks tend to get scarified. The dogs love to scratch on them. And so what we found is that we use a fiberglass pot. It's sort of decorative. It fits in with some of the other furniture that's in the area. You actually create effectively a tall collar so that the dogs can't actually get and strip the bark off the trees. Because we wanted to have some shade. We wanted to have that sort of benefit in that space, but we wanted to have something that was durable. And that's something that we've worked with on other dog parks and it's been successful.
Okay. Okay. Have you thought about making that just like a piece of seating around the tree?
It will actually be like a planter pot, like a fluted.
Wide enough to?
Yeah. It'll be tall.
Okay.
And it'd essentially be a clamshell, glue it together and that'll be a permanent fixture there.
Okay. And then my last question is, on the design that shows the whole map, you have along the south side of the building, a long, straight piece of green that says potential stormwater treatment area. Can you tell me what your thought or vision with that particular piece was there?
This area right here?
Yes.
Yeah. So there's a number of built-in, if you will, flow-through drainage planters that are being designed with the building to receive water from the roofs and from the podium areas and to be able to treat them in stormwater treatment planters around the building. So those are flow-through planters that built up high relative to the EVA driving surface.
Okay. So there's no dimensions listed here, but how wide is that? Do you know?
It varies. It looks eyeball there. That's probably about six, seven feet wide, I would say.
Okay. I may ask that it have like a step down, like a seat along it, because you've made that space down there with the kids' play areas and things and the chalk and all that, like that's the children's area. And I just think people, adults sitting out with their kid is going to want a place to sit down, sit on their phone while their kid's playing. And I just don't see any space where an adult can sit. And I realize the space you're working between, but I just wonder what your vision was for that. I think that that could be made a little more useful.
Yeah, we could definitely look into that.
Okay. That's all my questions.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant?
Chair Gunkel?
Yes.
I have one issue. Can we go back to the blow-up of the northeast corner? Yeah, that one. That one, okay. So I've discussed it with the applicant. The Assistant City Attorney has concerns about having exercise equipment in the public right-of-way due to potential liability concerns. However, we would be okay with this at a staff level if that one piece of exercise equipment that's shown across that curved line, yeah, that one right there, if that were moved so that it was on their property. The other things that are shown in the public right-of-way are bike repair stations, like fix-it stations, which is fine. We have those in the public right-of-way and other places in the city. And also, it doesn't show up too well here, but under the trees between the sidewalk and the curb would be a couple of bike racks, which is also fine. So just moving that one piece of exercise equipment onto their property and maybe just landscaping that area instead would do it for us. And the applicant is amenable to that.
That sounds great.
Thank you. And I'd like to open it up to, open up the public hearing. Are there members of the public who would like to speak on this item?
Good evening, Rod Henme. I'm an Emeryville resident and also a multifamily housing architect. And I wish to speak in support of the project. I think it's well-conceived. I think the idea of the multiple courtyards is a, breaks down the scale quite well and creates a sort of sense of intimacy. I think generally the treatment of the building, particularly on the north, is admirable. A few comments. One is, I think, I hope there's no checkerboard treatment at all in terms of the coloration. I think that the idea that these separate elements or masses be treated with a single color in the cement panel treatment is important because I think the idea that it's referencing a sort of industrial language is admirable. I think it's appropriate. And the checkerboard pattern is not at all an industrial pattern. It's quite the opposite. It's a very decorative kind of thing. And I think that where the building is simpler, the building is better. And I think the view from Schelmann, which is here, is the best view because it does have a sort of strength and simplicity. And the view that I'm most particularly concerned about is this view, the view from the west, sorry, from the north. And I think that's for a couple of reasons. One is the proportion of the base is not, it's higher and not, doesn't work quite as well as the base on, as you can see over here. And secondly, there's something about the amount of brick, whereas on the north side, sorry. Well, this is tricky. And this, okay. The, on the Schelmann side, the brick is, acts as a kind of screen or a small strip, and I think it's quite successful. On the other side, there's a whole mass of the building, as you can see here, that's treated. And somehow this side seems to me to be less industrial-looking probably because of that amount of brick. It somehow feels more like a kind of hospital elevation. I would suggest that the metal be used more because I think probably the metal and the brick are comparable in cost. And I think metal is in particularly, corrugated metal or some, or other types of metal would create, I think, a more handsome treatment. Secondly, is on that side, there are areas to, of opportunity, I believe, to open up more penetrations in that base to let light into the garage or let light into the bike storage areas, et cetera. Right now, the base is shown almost solid, and I think it would be appreciated both inside the building and outside as well. And that's basically my thoughts, but I think, I think it's a good project. I encourage you to approve it.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who'd like to speak on this item? Then I'm going to close the public hearing, go to Commissioner Comments.
Me?
Sure.
I, this project has come along a long ways. The applicant has been extremely receptive to the feedback that's been provided to them. I appreciate that immensely. In particular, I want to really call out the changes to the units and the inside of the building and the facade of the building. I think that the development of that over the course of the study sessions has been really productive and I'm very, very happy with that. I have one, one or two just small items. I think, I know that plant, there's a plant, I don't know what to call it, menu, pallet, thank you. I'm like, it's not a menu, but it's something. There's a pallet here of plants. And I know that sometimes the, this is the plant and sometimes you can deviate from it. I'm probably, I'm going to ask that we have a condition of approval that any plants, whether they're in this pallet or not, be deemed, and found, they have to be non-toxic to animals. This is going to be a pet-friendly development and it would be an oversight to put plants that could be poisonous to dogs. So I'd like that. And then the only other thing that I have is, I just don't know how I feel about the climbing wall, but I'll wait to hear from everyone else.
Thank you.
Well, I think they've done a remarkable job in answering most of our issues that we've brought up in the past. I do like the facade much better now and I hope they can include some of the prospective changes that we've requested. They seem to, from what the architect has said, it looks like he's open to doing that.
Yeah, I think it's a very good project and I think that the fundamental concept of wrapping, of wrapping the units around these four courtyards and then having these wonderful views out to the west is going to produce a terrific project for the city. And I also understand that the applicant's been very responsive, which is always appreciated.
Boy, everyone's so quick tonight. I do want to express my appreciation. You guys have come a long way, as you always do. I like that it's an iterative and a collaborative process that we work together and it always ends up in a nicer project. I'm really in favor of the vent stacks. I don't want to call them smoke stacks so much, and I think they do hearken back to Emeryville. And we have several biotech buildings that have those kind of stacks. So I think it's, it's really an important feature to make it look a little more industrial, a little different than just your regular flat-roofed apartment building. So what I like to ask of staff is, the developer has talked about being willing to accept the conditions of bike share, fitness equipment, obviously open to the public, the bike shop. I don't see any of that information as part of a condition of approval. Am I just overlooking that? As I read through it and don't see that, I'd like that to be a condition of approval, that it's not something that can be value-engineered out of the project, that the bike shop needs to be a publicly accessible amenity. The exercise equipment area to the north has to be open. Bike share, not so much. I mean, I think it's valuable. I just don't know how soon Berry Bike Share would put a pod in that area. There's not much to go to and from, but if you can identify a space for the bike share, I would definitely like that. And Charlie, maybe you could tell me, the bike repair stations, we have one at City Hall and one on the greenway, have they experienced any vandalism? Are they unusable and good condition?
I couldn't really answer that. I think Public Works would probably have to advise you on that. I can say of the one that's in front of City Hall, of course, I look at it outside my window every day, and I can tell you that it does get a lot of use. I'm not aware that it's been vandalized and it's been there for quite a while.
I am.
Are you?
At UC Berkeley, they're all vandalized. They're almost rendered unusable. And if we're going to have the bike shop as an open amenity, I don't know that this is a particularly important amenity.
It would only be an open amenity in certain hours, I presume, and we'd be closed at night.
Maybe if you, if it's...
It's in the building.
If it's card key access, I think you could make it 24 or so. But that's, I mean, if you want to put both of them out there, that's fine. But we've, we've actually started moving them indoors at UC Berkeley because the pumps get vandalized, the tools get stolen.
Sarah seems to have some thoughts on this.
The one in front of City Hall has been vandalized. People take the tools and we repair them promptly. It doesn't happen a lot, but it does happen. The bike station down by the Shell Station that was required as a condition of approval there, we required that they put a contact City Hall sign, but it's a responsibility of the station to maintain it. So we would get a phone call and then we contact them and make sure that they follow through with the repairs. I'm not aware of receiving any phone calls for that. I don't think it's been an issue there. So I think it kind of...
Tried to use it the other day and the clasp is broken. It won't...
Did you not call the number?
I didn't have a pencil and a piece of paper when I was...
So going on with that, that's not a condition of approval for me. If you put that in, great. If it does go in, I'd like the same sticker and the same responsibility to keep it up to date on that. But I think with the bike shop there, I don't know that this, I think it's redundant and it's going to be on City right-of-way. So that's neither here nor there for me. But I do, you know, want to make those, the bike shop and the equipment as part of the condition of approval because for me, that's what makes this a project that I'm willing to approve as a non-mixed use because this is how we're going to mix up the use, at least a little bit. So, and I agree with Resident Mr. Henme that if you could eliminate or wanted to eliminate all the checkerboard, I would still be behind that. It's, I agree. I think it's added decoration that I think the building needs to speak for itself and a cleaner building is, for me, a nicer building. So I'm not going to make that a condition of approval, but I think of looking at that. The brick on the north side, if you could penetrate that with some windows and stuff, I think that would be great. It's kind of, I don't know how much in the ninth inning we're doing with the design of that. The only thing I did want to compliment Sean and make a recommendation that you keep is on the barrel or the drum portion of that south side of the building, where you've put a square element on top of that. I really like that. I really like that. We kind of mixed it up and made a change there. So I'd like to make sure that you guys keep that in there as well. But I think it's come a long way. I think I may have had other, oh, and the TDM, let's see, everything that is in, written in the TDM packet, is that all part of condition of approval, Charlie?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So in its entirety, that's complete as part of a condition. Yeah. Because I thought that was very comprehensive and I think we need to keep all that stuff.
Well, that, actually, this, I don't know if this has been underscored so far during this meeting, but this is the first project to be approved under our new multi-unit residential regulations. So we have the unit mix, we have the family-friendly design. We also have the requirement for a TDM plan to be submitted as part of the application and approved by the Planning Commission as part of the approval of the project. So that's why it's in there.
Perfect. Perfect. So I think I'll leave it at that and if I think of anything else, I'll let you know.
Thank you. Yes, again, I'd just like to reiterate what many of my fellow commissioners have said, that we, I definitely appreciate all your hard work and listening to us and the changes that you've made over time and even the changes that the initial applicant had made from the original donut design. And I, I would like to see the center court, or center hall gathering node, you know, made symmetrical and the hallways lined up. And I would like to see you guys work with the fire department and the fire department work with you to come up with something a little softer in certain areas of the, of the EVA, so it's not just a strip of hardscape around the entire perimeter of the building. And that's all I had.
Shall we entertain a motion to approve the project with conditions as stated by myself and Commissioner Bouders?
Well, can we have a list of...
Yeah, let's make a list of conditions.
Sure. So it would be with the conditions as amended, as recommended for amending by staff, right, that you have before you? Plus, condition requested by Commissioner Bouders, that the plants be non-toxic to animals. And it would be appropriate to put that in Section 8A2A, which is where the landscape plan is. And then a condition requested by Commissioner Keller, that the bike shop and outdoor exercise equipment be open to the public. And that would be appropriate to put under design and site conditions ongoing, which would be new condition Roman numeral 7C8. Does that capture the amendments to the conditions?
Wait.
Is there another one?
Just a clarification regarding the bike shop and the exercise area being open to the public. Did you have some time in mind?
I didn't. I didn't. I mean, if the exercise is beyond a fence, it's obviously going to be open 24/7. If they feel that there's a security risk where their bike shop hours and you can't extend past a certain hour, I'm going to leave that to their discretion.
Well, you enter the bike shop through a corridor of the building, so once you're in the building, you're in the building.
But you can't put a door between the hallway corridor there, and it's perfectly plausible to make that a secure space. It's only actual, so that's why I'm going to leave it up to them if they want to do that or not.
If you just give you a key.
It's not for me, it's the general public.
To make that a condition, because this seems to be your personal issue.
Staff would like to request a slight amendment to Commissioner Keller's condition, which would be that the outdoor exercise equipment be moved out of the public right-of-way.
I'd add that, yes.
Okay, and be open to the public. So-
That's gated otherwise, right? We have those two gates still. It's not full circulation through the whole, the public can't walk around the whole building, correct?
I don't believe so. Not now. So does that capture all your amendments to the conditions?
That would be my motion.
Is there a second?
There's nothing else you had? I'm trying to think what you had. Did you have something, Brad?
I could make it a motion to, or, sorry, a condition of approval to straighten out the hallway and square out the center square.
How do people feel about that?
I don't think it's crucial. I agree, I would like it, but it compromises a lot of the other layout of the plans, and I don't think we should do that.
Well, I think, I think the, I think it's an interesting point that you observed. I'm surprised I didn't see it myself, and I, and I guess I would hesitate to be directing the architect how to design their building, obviously, but the architect and the applicant seemed to be willing to look into it, and if it were, if they were able to succeed, it would certainly, in my mind, make an even, a good building even better.
May I suggest that you leave it as a, as a recommendation to the applicant to look into?
Yes, I don't know that it needs to be-
And there was also windows on the west face side on the, on the northern projection too.
I mean, I think there's a handful of items, those, the moving, the smoke stacks, the whether or not it's checkerboard. I mean, I think for, although that for any of us, it's a make or break item, and kind of leaving those items to the discretion of the architect and the design team.
Yeah, if we're going to just add recommendations, the south side potential stormwater treatment area to include a, just seating area as a recommendation to, so that there's some seating on the south side of the building, but not a requirement.
I take it the applicant is noting down all these recommendations? All right.
Then do we have a second to the motion? I'll second it.
Thank you.
Okay, you ready to vote?
Yes.
So this is on approval with the conditions as amended. Commissioner Banta?
Aye.
Commissioner Bouders?
Aye.
Commissioner Cardoza?
Aye.
Commissioner Donaldson is recused, Commissioner Kang is absent, Vice Chair Keller?
Aye.
And Chair Gunkel?
Aye.
Five ayes, the application is approved. This decision may be appealed to the City Council within 15 days.
Okay, yes, if that, we could maybe take a five-minute break and reconvene at 8:30.
When she walked that walk, and talked that talk, and whispered in my ear, tell me she love me, I love that talk, that baby talk, she knocks me dead, right off my feet, how, 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 how.
Hello, this is Bobby Mercy Oliver at Blues Radio UK. If you're not listening to Blues Radio UK, you're just not listening.
And Sarah Billing will make this staff presentation.
Good evening. So as stated, this is the AT&amp;T Wireless Facilities Modification Application for 6363 Christie Avenue. This project is located at Pacific Park Plaza. You can see here, the property is outlined by this red line, and what we're focusing on today is the parking garage that is bordered by the freeway here to the west, and these private properties to the east, and the Pacific Park Plaza building to the north. I'm going to put that down so I don't scroll too fast. Here we go. So for project, the overview is to modify existing wireless facilities, to remove and replace existing antennas with similar-sized antennas, to relocate some of the antennas in the similar, similar same vicinity, to add remote radio units, which are also called RRUs, and to relocate some of the RRUs. Also, to remove and replace associated equipment within an equipment shelter. Major design review is required per our telecommunications ordinance, because some of the equipment is visible from public areas. Sector C and the equipment shelter are not visible from public areas, so that information is included for context as part of the overall project, but is not part of what's being reviewed. It's Sector A and B that require major design review. So here's a zoom-in of the parking garage. North is to the left side here, west, see? That's what I didn't want to have happen. Not going to touch that. All right. So A, Sector A, is on the northwest corner of the garage, and it's located above the equipment shelter, which is noted by that star there. Sector C is on the east facade, and Sector B currently is in the middle of the garage and is proposed to be located to the southwest corner. So here are the photo simulations of Sector A. The existing is on the left, the proposed is on the right. The proposal for Sector A is to remove and replace two of the existing antennas and relocate three of the antennas so that they're all at the same height. Right now, they're kind of jumbled at different heights, and also to add several RRUs. Sector B on your left there is the existing location. You can see it's directly over some parking spaces. This is not the safest of circumstances. So relocating this to the southwest exterior of the building is proposal, and to replace, just as Sector A, two of the antennas and add three RRUs. Here is the existing, two perspectives on the left, and proposed two perspectives on the right. These are taken from the freeway, northbound, I believe. So Sector C, this is one of locations where design review is not required, but also antennas are being replaced here and RRUs are being added. You can see here on the existing, on the upper left hand is the view, and the upper right hand is with the RRUs added. The bottom photos show the view from Christie, where this area is completely obstructed from the view from the public right-of-way by the brick building. And the equipment shelter, I challenge you to actually be able to see it in these photos. It's very discreet and incorporated into the facade of the parking garage, and this shot also is not from the public right-of-way. This is from private property directly north of the site. So all the equipment here is being replaced within the shelter, so no design review is required for this. General design review findings, the design of the project is consistent with the general plan. It does not limit sky exposure, and it doesn't add bulkiness or monolithic vertical or horizontal element to the build, to the garage. It is in conformance with Emeryville Design Guidelines. It's considered the existing buildings. Where feasible, all of the equipment is contained, and the building infrastructure and energy and mechanical systems are integrated into the building more so with this proposal than the existing conditions, as for example, on Sector C with the antennas being all located at the same height. Also, the project has to be of a high design quality, is compatible with, and will not adversely affect the surrounding area. And the proposed project is of a high design quality, as antennas go, and it's consistent with the design guidelines. It's compatible with, and will not adversely affect the surrounding area. The proposed antennas do not face any residential units, and they don't directly face a pedestrian street of any nature. Staff recommendation is to approve the project. I'm available for questions, and the applicant is also available for questions.
You. Are there any questions for staff?
I was just wondering, the project proposal says it proposes to upgrade the equipment and capacity and improve site safety. Is there-
Right, so let's go back to that Sector B. The current location, if you are a slightly taller individual than I am, you can actually reach up and touch those antennas. That's not the safest circumstance. You don't really want to be able to be directly in front of those antennas, so that's why they're being proposed to move to the exterior of the building, where people can't directly access them.
I love the car with the flat tire.
Yeah, somebody collects, somebody collects 1970s cars.
I was like, it looked like it was taken when PPP was made, except for the white car, so.
This is a historic photo?
Photoshop that Nissan in, didn't you?
Are there other questions for the staff?
Yeah, could you show the slide that shows the west elevation, the photographs before and after?
Sure.
I think it was-
This one?
Uh, let's see.
Yeah, so this is the, oh, west elevation, I apologize.
Go back one, you're right there. So on the proposed, it shows proposed new three-inch conduit.
Yeah. I'm going to try and touch this mouse and not go crazy with the slides, okay? So here is a conduit here.
And then down below, you see the, you see the two conduits.
Yes.
So as I read in the report, the conduit's going to be painted to match the garage. Do you know what material the conduit's made out of?
Probably metal. Yeah, probably metal. I don't know specifically, obviously, I'm guessing.
Okay. That's just curiosity on my part. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Is the applicant going to present or just answer questions? What's that?
She said that I've covered it.
Oh, okay.
There you go.
Are there, are there, I mean-
Hi, I'm Tully Nagazarian, representing AT&amp;T. I was just going to say, Sarah just has done a great job, and it's been actually really nice working with her, so. But yeah, we are here just to upgrade the site. The site was built in the 90s, so it just cannot handle sort of the, the way wireless has just- just kind of exploded in the last, you know, several years. And so, it needs to be upgraded to handle the capacity and just the need for that type of service. So, we're basically here to do that and we're excited to do this project. And if you have any other questions?
Are there questions for the applicant?
And I would like to address your question. So, right now, there's a cable tray that's actually very large and since we are actually removing some equipment from the shelter, we can remove some of those coax cables. So, it's gonna be actually less of a visual sort of, it's, we're moving the cable tray, essentially.
I guess the cable tray is further to the north, is that right?
No, it's right there. It's actually, it's gonna run along the same line as the conduit, but now you're just gonna see two three-inch conduits versus, I think it's like 12 inches of a cable tray. So, it's gonna be less of a visual clutter, actually. It's gonna look cleaner.
Yeah. I agree.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we'll open up public hearing. Are there members of the public who would like to speak on this item?
I did just remember that I have some, an email from...
Okay. Thank you. So then we'll close the public hearing and go to Commissioner Comments. Commissioner Banta?
I think this looks like a pretty straightforward, practical solution to a utilitarian problem, so I don't have any comments.
Looks very simple to me, I agree with you.
I agree.
No comments.
I guess my only comment was, I guess the email pretty much says what I was thinking, which I remember there was, was some discussion or reference to the possibility of screening, but I think any screening would just, you know, I think any screening would just draw more attention to it and probably not be particularly attractive, so. That's it?
Move approval.
One second.
Ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Banta?
Aye.
Commissioner Bowders?
Aye.
Commissioner Cardoza?
Aye.
Commissioner Donaldson?
Aye.
Commissioner Kang is absent. Commissioner, Vice Chair Keller is recused. Chair Gunkel?
Aye.
Five ayes, the application is approved. This decision may be appealed to the City Council within 15 days.
Right. Moving right along, we're gonna move into study sessions and start with item 7A, the Stanford Health Center. Sorry, I didn't give Commissioner Keller enough time to run up the stairs.
You like our collection of El Dorados, huh?
I was, I was trying to get your attention, I was gonna ask you if that was your car. It's like you bike so much, I wonder why.
No, if I had that, I'd sell it.
Hello again. So, I'll be presenting on the study session this evening for the Stanford Health Center. The applicant is also here and would like to speak this evening and address any questions you have as well. So, this is for 5800 Hollis Street. Here is the building and it's located on the west side of Hollis Street, just north of Powell Street. And we'll be focusing along the Hollis Street side of the building and a little bit on the southern tip of the building as well. So, for the project overview, the current proposal is for exterior modifications, which include a canopy over the sidewalk, valet parking in the public right-of-way along Hollis Street and signage both on the building and in the public right-of-way along Hollis. This requires major design review, which includes major sign permits and variants would be required for the signs in the public right-of-way. So, just a quick overview of what we're, how we're gonna approach this tonight is the issues to be considered tonight, the project orientation, specifically looking at the canopy, the valet and the signage, and then committee and staff review comments thus far. So, what we're hoping to get feedback from you tonight on is the valet and canopy in the public right-of-way, the design of the project and the signs on public property if you feel a variance could be made for that. So, for project orientation, up above here, we have the existing facade and on the bottom we have proposed facade and below that is an overview of the public right-of-way itself. Here we have the doors. Currently, the position of the doors, the one on the, towards the south of the property will need to be moved a little bit and that's actually already approved in and of itself as part of a minor design review that was needed for building improvements, for the tenant improvements that are going on within the building right now for the medical offices. Here is the garage location and you can see the garage is located between the two doors. And this is the canopy area, which goes over the sidewalk and the canopy extends covering the full area of the sidewalk between both of the doors and across the front of the garage area as well. The valet area, on the top here for existing, if we start at the southern part of the property, which is to your right, there is a yellow loading zone, which then transitions to a green zone for limited-time parking. And then north of the garage is a red zone. What the applicant is proposing, it's a little bit hard to see on this slide, is to shorten that green zone and put a valet in south of the parking, of the parking garage entrance and have the valet pick up to the north of the parking garage entrance.
Can I ask you a question about that real quick?
Yes.
On the existing, why is it a red striped zone north of the garage right now?
I have no idea.
Charlie, do you know why it's a red stripe?
Uh, no, I don't know why.
There is loading directly on the north side of that building.
Right.
So, that might have something to do just with the turning in for the loading zone, but I, that's just speculation. I don't know for sure. For site circulation, the thick blue band is pedestrian and unfortunately, it's not showing up very well on the overhead slide here. Here is the green zone that's remaining. Here is the queuing zone for dropping off the valet. Here is the actual valet drop-off area, which is close to this door entry right here to the building. Cars that are dropped off then go into the garage that's in the middle of the building and then on the north side here, we have the valet. We can see here with this yellow line, this is the loading that I just mentioned a few moments ago. Within the building, there is bike parking on the first floor and also in the basement. The first floor is short-term bike parking for guests and the basement, it's bike lockers for all-day parking for employees. The only elevators in the building are through this main lobby entrance, which is to the north of the garage, so this is not internally connected to the medical facilities on the south part of the building. So, there is, that's why these two entrances are here, okay?
Does that mean that somebody that's dropped off in the valet drop-off area has to then walk across the driveway?
I imagine it would depend on the type of appointment that they're having, but I think that'd be a great question for the applicant to clarify. So, focusing on the canopy, here is a simulation of that. You can see here that the garage is in the middle of that. It doesn't really show the entry, but this is the valet drop-off area here. And then on the north side here is the area where you receive the car and also the main entrance to the building. So, at the top is existing and below is proposed and those are the same features I just discussed. The doors on either side with the garage in the middle. So, here is the canopy design. So, it's a little bit hard to see, but here is the sidewalk. There is a building facade. The supports for the canopy are outside of the sidewalk in the public right-of-way and the canopy extends over the sidewalk. The canopy is made of white oak wood slats with a clear plastic cover for rain protection and to let light in during the day and there's also illuminating strips between the fixtures for evening or dark periods. The canopy measures 128 feet long and it's 11 feet wide and there's about 10 feet of space, slightly more than that underneath the canopy. The installation of the canopy does require the removal of two street trees as well as a streetlight and so it would need a tree removal permit and the streetlight would, the applicant is proposing on replacing that level of lighting with lights along the exterior of the canopy. Here is a canopy rendering during the daytime and you can see the entrance over on the right and the valet drop-off over here on the left and during the night. So, for the valet portion, there is 117 spaces in the parking garage that exist, but the applicant anticipates that more parking will be required for both patients and employees. So, they're working on a plan that we do not have all the details of yet to have all the employee parking off-site arranged in local garages. Patient parking would be provided by the valet so that no patient would actually be driving into the parking area at all. All of that would be handled strictly by the valets in and out and no patients would be inside the garage. The valet service is proposed to be along Hollis Street and requires removal of the green curb, as I discussed, and also requires installation of infrastructure of ramps and stairs and rails. So, at the top here, we have the existing conditions and at the bottom here, this is the removal of some landscaping to install the ramp and access areas from the valet to the sidewalk on both the south and north sides of the garage. So, here is the arrival queuing zone. You move down to, this is the patient drop-off area. There is the garage valet entry and exit and then that's where the patient picks up their car. So, here's a rendering of the valet area during the day. And here is a rendering of the valet area during the night and you can also see there's some signs labeling the designated areas. So, speaking of signage, signage is located both on the building itself and is also proposed for the public right-of-way. The signage on the private property includes two wall signs mounted on the side of the building, one south-facing and one along Hollis Street. They both are proposed to be illuminated and also some signage along the ground floor identifying entry areas and directional instructions. The signage for the south-facing wall is proposed to be 13 feet wide and 5 feet 5 inches tall, which is about 71 square feet. These are pin-mounted letters that are halo-illuminated and the S.H.I.E.L.D. logo with it is also to be illuminated. And here is a rendering of that. This is from eastbound Powell Street. So, signage for the east-facing wall that faces Hollis Street is 10 feet wide and 5 feet tall, about 52 square feet. It has a background, they're not pin-mounted letters, they're push-through letters that are also to be halo-illuminated and it also has the illuminated S.H.I.E.L.D. logo. And here is a rendering of that. So, the ground floor entry signs, as I mentioned, are placed along the different entry points of the building. So, the signage on public property, there is one monument sign proposed towards the south of the building area and then three valet signs along the valet area, of course. So, the monument sign is not supposed to be 10 feet horizontal. That's not quite sure what happened there. That's slightly overstated. It's actually 3 feet. It's 6 feet tall and 4 inches thick, pardon me, there we go. And the proposal is to have this be externally illuminated. And here is a rendering of that monument sign that you would see as you're approaching the valet area on, facing northbound on Hollis Street. And then the three valet signs, they are on 4 feet tall posts, that's correct. Each sign is 4 feet tall in and of itself and the signs are 2 feet wide, 2 inches, and they're not illuminated. They're also not in the sidewalk area, they're just out of it in line with the support columns for the canopy. And here are some renderings of that. All of those little red dots are showing other locations of signage for the project. So, the pedestrian and bicycle committee reviewed this project and their recommendations for the project were to double the amount of short-term bike parking spaces to 12 total. They were hoping that there might be a way to provide some of the parking along the sidewalk, understanding that's a constricted space, but that having all of the parking inside, it doesn't give a very visual welcoming situation for bikes. And to provide some wayfinding signage for the indoor bike parking so people know that it's available. Concerns expressed were impacts to the bicycle boulevards, that increases in traffic to this location, 59th Street immediately north of this, Horton immediately west of this, Doyle immediately east, would all potentially have increases in traffic and they were concerned about the impacts of the bicycle boulevards. Designing to discourage left turns and U-turns coming in and out of the project and to access the valets was raised as concern and also to make sure that mid-block crossings for pedestrians is discouraged through design here. Staff reviewed this project at several DCC meetings, most recently last week, and concerns were raised from staff over the privatization of public space and about impacts of bicycle boulevards, drainage and standing water potential along Hollis Street. There's not a lot of sloping there, so having to design to make sure that there's not standing waters in those new ramped areas and also the removal of on-street parking and the impacts to the nearby businesses that that might create. There was some clarification requested, there's a lot of railings proposed along the frontage there where the ramps are and depending on the slopes of those ramps, they may or may not be necessary. So, that's something the staff would like more information on and they suggest that the valet area curbs be painted white and that the, that those parking areas be made available to the public when the offices are not in operation in the evening.
Can you go back one?
Yes. So, that the curb, so the valet area, when it's not being used, the valet area, the public can park there if they wanna go to the restaurants or visit a neighbor.
That's what a white painted curb means?
Yes.
Okay. I wasn't familiar with that.
So, also, staff had some concerns that the, all valet options have not been fully explored, so staff would like a comparison of what if the valet were to be located fully within the building. We understand from the applicant that they don't feel that's feasible, but we don't have data on that yet and also, we need alternative plans for when Hollis Street has construction. What if there's roadwork, you need to have repaving or utilities? What happens in those circumstances? How will they handle their access to the building and the valet service at those points? So, we need information on that as well. So, again, these are the issues that we're considering tonight and please let me know if you have any questions and, like I said, the applicant would also like to speak.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for staff?
Have you evaluated the issue of, in these drop-off and pickup areas, of the driver's door being opened out into traffic?
Do you mean if it's wide enough to accommodate that? We haven't done a specific analysis of that, but right now, there's curbside parking there and people get in and out of their...
Yeah, but they're not doing it as frequently as they will be doing here.
Sure. Sure.
Any other questions?
Yeah, one question. You know, the BikePad group cited the famous line of traffic impacts and to me, that seems like someone was gonna go in that building, so there were going to be traffic impacts. So, are they highlighting that these would have traffic impacts on the bike boulevard because it's valet or what? I mean, how is this different than any study we did prior to when the building was designed and built?
Sure. Sure, I think it's because of the higher turnover anticipated, like originally, this was to be a lab, lab building, right? So, you have the office workers come and leave and this is about 55 people an hour and they were just worried about where are they going to drive when they leave? So, part of that can be managed through TDM practices, so having outreach, the Stanford, when they send out appointment information, can provide information to their clients, to their patients, saying, "When you leave, these are the recommended routes," for example.
Yeah, but this use is not outside of the permitted use, so it's not...
Correct, no, they have a conditional use permit for, for this use. I'm just conveying what they raised as concerns.
Any other questions for staff?
I might have a question. Sarah, the existing building has a, is in a garage door opening that has a certain height, clear height... height. Is that clear height as a result of conforming to emergency vehicle access requirements? Or do you know if there's any, any requirements related to that clear height? And does that clear height, is that maintained by the canopy?
Oh, well, the canopy would be extending over the garage. Let's see if we can get a good rendering here.
The applicant may know the answer to this question.
Yeah, I think, I think the... You have to speak to the, Richard, you have to speak to the mic.
You come to the microphone?
Yeah, we can address this later.
So the applicant will address that when they speak with you.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
The applicant like to present?
First of all, I want to thank you all for allowing us a chance to come and talk with you about this project. And I wanted to introduce some of the other team members who are here tonight with me. Maluna Tay is our Director of Transportation for Stanford Hospitals. So he's able to answer any specific questions regarding traffic management and valet. Elizabeth Nielsen, and she's our Director of East Bay Capital Projects for Planning, Design and Construction. And Richard Chang, as part of our project team, is the architect for KMD, who has been working the most closely with Sarah and Maru on the development of this concept. I just wanted to do a brief overview expressing our genuine appreciation at the opportunity to extend our services into the East Bay area, particularly with Emeryville. Emeryville's an ideal location for Stanford. It affords us the opportunity in terms of capacity, in terms of the size and location of the facility, ideal access. And this community has a diversity, both economic diversity and demographic diversity, which we find very exciting. We also recognize that the medical office building and the services that are provided also provides diversity to the city of Emeryville and gives the patients and visitors another reason to come to Emeryville, which we're excited to be part of that and creating that kind of a potential. It is a medical facility. It does have a broad range of services and we realize that those services create unique circumstances in terms of needs, which is one of the reasons that we're here tonight. Being that these are unique, we know that Sarah and Maru particularly have been working very closely with us over the last six months to help us refine the concept and look at very specific requirements that need to be addressed. So we feel that this concept is, is very well-developed and I think it puts us in a good opportunity to answer any questions that you have. So at this point, I'm just going to again say thank you and I'm going to open it up for questions and comments. And thank you.
Are there any questions for the applicant?
Yeah. I still don't quite understand why you couldn't have the pickup drop-off right inside the entrance.
It's a great question. It's sort of a central question to the whole scheme. Stanford provides free valet services and part of the reason is just to be able to provide both comfort and safety to our patients as they come for care and they come with various needs. We did explore a variety of options for valet early in the project and one of them was to look at valet immediately within side, the drop-off area, the entrance area. The scheme provided a couple of conditions which we found would be challenging, both in terms of safety and service for our members. The first is if you look at the queuing area and the length as provided, if we take that into the facility and you measure that length relative to the furthest that we can pull in before you have to make a right turn to go down the ramp, that queuing area will actually extend out on top of the sidewalk and into the street. And if you consider away that option and in terms of a patient who may be the first time coming, we're making a raft of decisions at that point and may not be aware of, say, cross pedestrian traffic, both public and patients who may be going down to access the Pavilion B. The second is when a patient gets out of their car, if they're on the passenger side or on the driver's side and they want to go into the main entrance of the building, they're going to have to cross oncoming traffic in order to negotiate that change. And for us, that's another level of safety that we need to be concerned of. And I think the third point, and it's sort of central to the whole transportation concept, is that if, if patients are turning into the valet or when they leave valet, they're going to have to make decisions about the use of traffic, onboarding and exiting. So when a patient is, is leaving in their car, they're going to have to make a decision very quickly on whether to turn left or right. By putting the valet outside, we're able to simplify those choices and keep the cars moving in a northern direction and to avoid the turn from the drive south by making a left-hand turn into oncoming traffic. So as we looked at these options, for us, we, it was fairly clear to us that moving the valet out to the front of the building provided us the very best option. One last detail is if we have the queuing area inside the building, after working on, with waste management and other services, that visitor would have to get out immediately in front of the trash area. So again, for us, in terms of the, the brand that we tried to provide, we, we found that a detriment to the, the type of services that we consider. So for that whole series, we moved very quickly to looking at a valet service on the street.
Are there any other questions for the applicant?
Just real quickly, in the queuing area for the valet arrival, how many cars can that queuing area hold, including the one that's at the valet stand? Are we looking at three vehicles or...
The queuing area totaled, would allow for five cars.
Okay.
And two of the cars would be assumed standing and available for, for exiting.
Valet service.
And then three cars would be in a queuing area.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Do you have any estimate of how frequently the cars would be coming from your other facilities or...
Sure. Sure. I can answer that in part, but I'm going to ask Maluna to come up because the answer tends to extend into other questions. And I think it might be best served by Maluna, who's been looking at this fairly carefully.
Good evening. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to present today. My name is Maluna. I'm the Director of Transportation for Stanford Healthcare. The rate of arrival and the estimate based on the patient population would be about 55 cars per hour. This is more likely similar to one of the sites that we have in Palo Alto. And our calculation is an average, a valet attendant, based on the distance traveled, can park about 12 cars an hour. So the staffing model that we will bring forward would help us to manage the flow in the front. Just to back up and also provide you what we do currently and why we think this would be efficiently managed is, we were able to predict or we were able to develop a predictive model, a vehicular predictive model at Stanford today that will tell us exactly how many cars will be arriving every hour. How we do that is we take the patient's appointments and we understand the patient's appointment lengths of stay and divide that by the hours and predict the number of cars arriving and that will dictate our staffing model. Just to answer your questions, yes, there will be about five cars in the front. We understand the rate of arrival and our staffing model to relocate the cars or to move the cars into the garage will be based on rate of arrival of the cars per the day.
So that was, how many cars per hour?
55 cars per hour.
And how many square feet is your Stanford facility, rather, the Palo Alto facility?
It's most similar to this, it's about 90,000 square, 90,000 usable square foot.
And this one is about 80,000?
Eighty-six, 87,000 square foot.
Now, isn't it so that at Stanford, that your drop-off rate per hour is more like 70 cars?
It depends on the site. So the site that we have actually compared, this site is something similar in a real, like in real estate time or in a space. So there are other valet locations that we have different rates for different locations. So the main hospital has a higher rate and I also have a high real estate and room in terms of valet parking accepting cars as well. So this site is comparable to the Blake Boulevard Cancer Center in terms of the rate of arrival, the patient population, as well as, you know, the rate of the cars arriving to the site.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I have one for staff.
Some other technical questions. I don't know if this is the right sentiment to answer them, but I had started to ask this question about the garage height and I don't know if you know the answer to that or not.
Specifically, the clearance, would, the canopy is above the garage, so the clearance has not been compromised.
I see. And do you know if that clearance was originally designed to allow ambulances or other emergency vehicles to get, come in?
I do not know that.
I think I can sort of respond to that. This building, Emery Station Greenway Building, when it was built by Wareham, was not designed to be a medical facility. It was intended to be a research and development lab and office building. In fact, as Sarah may have said in her presentation, we approved a minor conditional use permit to allow medical use in this building. So the, the garage was not originally designed for medical vehicles.
But, but all garages, I mean, when this was approved and built, if all, I mean, since then, it's still been 8 foot 2 minimum required clearance. So, I mean, it's been that way for a number of years. So...
And this, this facility isn't really receiving, receiving people by ambulance, is that correct?
We don't anticipate ambulances to come frequently and I know ambulance patients will come, arrive, for any emergency calls if somebody in the facility, as an employee or patients who might, who might...
This is an outpatient clinic.
Yes.
Just clarifying, that's what I thought it was.
So I'm, I'm concerned about the traffic implications to the surrounding streets, which are very small residential streets and directing people to come south or northbound on Powell's, to come off Powell and make a left turn and queue up there. You have the people that are coming from the northern direction and are going to be, if they get off at the Ashby-Schellmound exit, they could, it's a very confusing route to get to, point the right direction for the queuing. And also, when one comes out of the garage, one is pointing in the direction that most people are likely not wanting to go, so they're going to have to be rerouted somehow. And I'm wondering how that is going to be addressed because if people come out to 59th and make a right turn, that's going to be additional traffic that's crossing where the Greenway runs. It's going to, it is going to go onto a narrow residential neighborhood and bike boulevards. Can you talk a little bit about the surrounding traffic patterns?
Sure. So two parts of questions. And the first question is, you know, people live in the garage. One of the purpose of the valet service to make only right turn out of the garage and force traffic to go forward towards 59th Street is to make sure there won't be no traffic crossing the double line into oncoming traffic or make a left into Powell Street to go into the freeway, to avoid that, all of the cars that are coming out of the garage by the valet will make right, right in front of the main entrance will be dropped off for patients. So that's the only direction patients will be able to leave the facility. Arriving vehicles, which are coming from the other side from Ashby exit, our goal is, we're still currently working on that, our goal is our televax that will call every patient every night, a day off or the night off before your appointment, would always direct in our communication, our plan, our website, all will direct for patients to arrive through Powell, left into Hollis Street, and that's our goal. They might, we're still working on the contingency plan in case if anybody does not, you know, get the message or did not make it and make, you know, show up to the property. One of the contingency power evaluating is we'll allow those minimum cars, one or two of them that will arrive, to drive into the garage and we will treat that car on the first floor of the garage. We won't allow all cars to make that left turn and cross traffic. However, if anyone showed up from that, passed our communication through televax, the email communication, the documentation, that includes their transportation parking option. If they did not read that and should show up from the Ashby exit, we would allow them to just pull into the garage and we'll take the car from there.
And if I could just add, if I could just add to that, the traffic study that we put together determined that there's a smaller percentage of cars that would actually be coming from the north. Most of the cars will be coming off of Powell, either from the San Pablo Drive or coming from the freeway. For those cars coming towards the facility, what we will do is we'll work closely with the city to look at those things that we can do as part of the tenant of this facility to mitigate any conditions. We understand that once off the property, the range of, of effect that we can have is going to determine a lot on, on what the city will provide, you know, to us, but we're willing to work with the city. The second is that, and it's, it's really central to the valet system, is that the, the patients and visitors are given a lot of information both prior to their, to their appointment and following their appointment that informs them of the best ways to get back to the freeway. And they usually have a map. It's clearly marked. And for many patients, once they've come to the facility, many come for regular appointments or they have chronic diseases that require them to come, they get, they get used pretty quickly. They get indoctrinated into what's the best, best approach. Our goal would, to be able to give people the most convenient, least impactful to the, to the city and to avoid, as, as we've talked, I've talked with many of you, to, to avoid traffic going onto some of the secondary and tertiary streets in that area. We'll work with you. We, we want to help to mitigate those conditions and we see ourselves as part, part of a broader puzzle for the area.
I have a question. It's going to be followed up with a question for staff. The employees don't park in this building though, correct?
They do not.
And they park at the Emery West Station under your agreements?
Yeah, they will, we're working on agreements with Wareham to have the, the parking, which is 268 spaces, broken into three locations that would be accessed off Pelladue and Horton Streets. So we wanted to break it down. They have supply parking in those areas. We'll create separate leases to, to manage that. And what we didn't want was a convergence, not only of patient parking, but also the peaks of the morning and the evening to all come rushing into, into Hollis Street. And, and really to provide the, the best parking, the closest parking for the patients.
Okay, so my follow-up question for staff on that particular point is the two pedestrian crosswalks that would be used to move people from those parking garages to this building will be at 59th and Hollis and then at Powell and Hollis. And those are pedestrian-activated, is that correct?
I believe there are push buttons there, yeah.
Okay, so is it, is it one of those things where it lights up after the, the cycle for the amount of time that each direction gets? Or is it going to be, I'm trying to remember if the 59th one will change the light if you push it? I'm just wondering, you know what I'm saying? Like, I'm wondering if it will continuously turn the light red during the peak hours?
I don't know. I don't know. The traffic engineer would have to answer that question. My understanding is that, from him, is that the signals in Emeryville are, first of all, they're coordinated with each other and they're also on various cycles that change throughout the day. They may be two or three different timings at, you know, different times of day. So it could be that, say during the evening hours, I'm just speculating, I don't know this for a fact, but I know some of our signals are like this, during the evening hours, after rush hour, when there's not a lot of traffic, it could be that that signal at 59th Street, for example, is just always green for Hollis Street unless it's activated for the cross street. In which case, a pedestrian pushing the button would change it. At other hours, pedestrian pushing the button would just make sure that there was a walk sign along with the green light.
That's my only question for now.
I just had a question on the valet kiosk and it shows out here, so when the business is closed, does that move inside the building?
The, the valet kiosks are movable, so they'll be brought out in the morning and they'll, they'll be brought in, locked storage. at the end of the business day.
So my concern and interest would be that whatever wheel system you have, if I'm not incorrect, those are pavers in that area? So the surface is not as smooth as concrete, so if the wheels are hard steel or something, it could end up breaking up those pavers, chipping them. So I just would like to ask that you guys look at, you know, the type of method of moving rubberized wheels or something that would not damage the sidewalk as you're moving it in and out.
We, we work with transportation on the specifications for the valet, and typically, we have them custom-made by Stanford University Woodshop. They're done in, so we can, we will site specifically design these for those kinds of conditions.
Thank you.
So I have some questions for you about the signage.
Sure.
For the drop-off. On sheet A, on sheet S3, you show a plan of where your signs are located, and you show the sign 03 being the southernmost sign, and that's illustrated on sheet S7 in the rendering. And that's the one that announces your enterprise plus that this is a drop-off area. So I, I had a chance to talk about this with you when we met, but I find that the older I get, the more I appreciate being, having the obvious explained to me. And this sign is very handsome, but it's also, I don't know that it's, that it's going to be visible and clear enough to people so that they understand what it means altogether. It's possible someone might interpret that this is where the drop-off is, right here, and pull over and stop and expect someone to come and help them. So you might simply add, "Pull, please pull up to drop-off area," or something to that effect. And as I understand it, this light, this sign is lit externally at night, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And then the letters are raised, letters on the sign, and they can be backlit as well.
All right. Because obviously, in the wintertime, it will be, make it easier to identify. And then the rendering on sheet S7 also shows the, the signage is further down that will indicate the drop-off areas, and those are signs 6, 5, and 4. I guess 5 and 6 are the drop-off, and 4 is the pickup, correct? Right. Okay, so again, those, those signs, I think, are admirable in their their minimal design, which is a vertical disposition of the letters that says drop-off. But you might consider adding arrows, actually, that say, "This is where you do it, right here." In addition, the, the zone for the cars to pull up and drop off the passengers, or or they themselves, as a driver leaves the car for the valet, that zone, it, it could be that when the valet attendants are not there, that someone could simply pull up and consider this to be a nice place to park. So you might want to think about doing something with that zone that makes it crystal clear that this is an active drop-off area that needs to be kept clear otherwise. And it was mentioned, I heard it mentioned, that there was a concept that after hours, it would be available to the public to park here? Is that right?
We, that was raised as a possibility by commissioners, and we'd be very open to, to providing whatever indications would be necessary for off-hours parking.
Okay. My final comment about signage is that when people are coming here, they are going to, they will have been directed by their doctor or nurse or whatever to come to either entrance A or entrance B, is that correct?
Yes.
And those, those entrances are very understated in their, in their identification. It's very small, it's not very nice-looking, but again, I think it would benefit the patients and the public and everybody in general for people to know exactly where those entrances are as they are driving forward. So a large letter, you know, perpendicular to those doors at either location would make sense to me.
There are great comments. We find there's always a balancing act between the intuitive sign in terms of the graphic and the quick pictorial display of what to do, and then the descriptive in terms of how to do it. And the, the signings that we've laid out, we've worked with a signage consultant that we've used for years, Kate Keating and Associates. We can bring those comments back to Kate Keating and to look at whether we can make modifications to improve that. One of the, just as a sidebar, one of the great things about the Pavilion A part is that we were, it provides dedicated services that don't necessarily need to be in the facility. So there'll be traffic coming there, which is, I think the patients will be more well, and, and they're there to make quick decisions. And, and when you drop off, the, the access from the drop-off area, the immediate door, we've moved the door over, the immediate door that you see is Pavilion B. And having the sign next to it which says Pavilion A and Pavilion B, for most all patients, that's what they're going to see right away. If we want to strengthen the, both the Pavilion B and the directional sign, I'd, I'd do it. I'd make it be as strong as possible. The other sidebar about moving the door is it actually allowed us to shorten the canopy by 30 feet. So the canopy now takes up less, less than half the length of the entire building if you include the radius at the end. So we can, we can look at that, definitely.
Are there any other questions?
I have one final comment. At the, at the meeting that we had, you had, you brought up the issue of public art. Could you share with us what your plans are at the moment for that?
Yes.
I'm sorry, maybe it might be, this is time for questions, and we still haven't had the public comment period.
Oh, we haven't had public comment.
That discussion might be better for when it goes back to the commission.
Well, I mean, go ahead and finish your answer regarding the public art.
Well, we, we understand that part of the provisions for development is, is the use of public artists for, for spaces of this size. There's a current arts installation, which we've worked with Wareham, and what we'd like to do is actually bring the public art from deep inside the lobby area and actually bring it out to forward face on a wall that's, that's the second-story piece of the, of the lobby itself. Actually, looking up at the screen, I can see it just below the 5800 is a interpretation of what could be a very large piece of art that would be about 10 feet from the face of the building. And it would be internally lit, especially in the evening hours, it would just be very brightened and would pop open. And we think it's a good use of that space, and actually brings the art forward and has much more of a public nature to it than the current installation. We're also now talking to Emeryville artists, and we've sort of shortlisted who we think would be the best artists for this, for this project, and we're really excited to move that forward.
Are there any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
I have one, just looking at the place where people pick up their cars out of the garage and are pointed northerly on Hollis Street. I am assuming that they would be directed to make a left turn at that intersection immediately to get back to, make a left and make another left to get back to Powell Street, because that's the only way that they would be avoiding the residential neighborhoods. Has, have people looked at the distances there and the traffic flow, and whether that's a traffic movement that is safe and easy to make, to pull over to the left-turn lane from the middle of the block there?
So a left from Hollis onto 59th, and then a left from.
To Pellidoo, back to Powell. Because that's the only way that you get back to Powell without going through a residential street.
There is a left-turn light at Hollis and 59th.
I think Gail's asked.
I'm talking about when there's traffic coming north on Hollis Street and somebody's trying to pull out from the street and get into the left-turn lane, is that, has that been looked at?
It's funny you ask, I drove it three times this morning, just to get used to it.
How'd it work?
Oh, beautifully. The, the length of travel from the, from the pickup point to 59th Street is, is very adequate for somebody orienting themselves and making the decision to pull into the left-hand lane. Once you've turned with the aerial signalization, you come to another stop sign. And at that stop sign, you, you have the option, and the roadway's actually quite wide at that point, and you can, you can make a fairly easy left-hand turn. The traffic was fairly quiet during the day, so it was, it was fairly easy for me to make. And then down Pellidoo to make, to make the entrance onto Powell Street was very straightforward.
But you can only go right, you can't cross.
Right, right.
So you can only go west.
Right. That's where most people will be trying to go.
Just to give you a visual, it's, when you come out of that, it is only one lane, so you're not crossing two lanes of traffic to get into the turn lane, and you have the whole other commercial building which Amherst is in, you still have that whole length. So I haven't looked at it, and I think that's a good valid question, but in visualizing, I think, you know, depending on the traffic of the day, but once you get out in the travel lane, getting to the left-hand turn lane shouldn't add to that, because you're already not crossing another lane to get into that, so you're just in the travel lane and then you hit the left, so I think it should be adequate.
Okay. Do we have any more questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Are there any members of the public who would like to speak to this item? Yep, and I'm going to close public comment and go to Commissioner comments.
Okay, well, I think it's overall, it's a very good project. I enjoyed the time that we had to discuss the issues at hand during. I think the canopy adds a, a element of architectural to the building, the building is pretty flat. I like that at night, how the light activates the sidewalk, we go to Bureau 510 quite often. We discussed the rails, and looking at this picture, I kind of am torn either way with the railings. If we do the railings, I would probably like to see just nothing between them, I don't like the mesh part of it. The one reason I do like the railing is that if we're going to add busyness to the sidewalk adding impact, the thing I like about them is it's going to prevent people from jaywalking. And there is a lot of that there now, so when we add the more population and people in the way, getting out of their cars and et cetera, I think that will prevent people from exiting. And I don't know if someone could bring up one of the drawings, I'm looking at A13 on. So in our discussion, we talked about, and I think Commissioner Banta brought this up too, about marking the, yeah, that one right there, marking the parking area or the, or the valet area with hash marks. I think that would be confusing to drivers, because hash mark usually means you can't enter that or go into that. So I think that, but what we did talk about is from the left-hand line and where the travel lane is, I think there's enough space that we could put in two lines with a hash mark in between that, so that drivers would kind of naturally give a visual buffer. And I've actually saw that this past weekend, we drove down to Santa Cruz on Highway 1 and near, I think it's Barney Dune Beach, there's a parking lot that comes off of Barney Dune Beach on the Highway 1, and they have about a two-foot barrier or a margin of just two white lines with hash marks in between it. So I'd like to ask that we look into that, and so we create a visual barrier, because car doors will be opening into traffic, so we can kind of create a hash mark safe zone for that, so I could draw up something if I'm not making myself really clear. But I think that would be something to, to make that a little bit more safe, because when people enter a car and exit when they're by themselves, it's a shorter period of time than when a valet person is coming in to get into your car while you're getting out. So I think the cars are going to stay there with their door open longer, a little bit while, longer, so I think it'd be nice if we could make that a little safer, more obvious to the cars just traveling down. I definitely support the BikePeds recommendation of making wayfinding to bike parking in the garage. I often am going to doctor appointments and et cetera on my bike and find it very difficult to find a place to park. There's one place where they did have in, inside garage parking, but I had no idea it was there. So that would be very helpful, and I don't want an overabundance of signs around this place, but I think the wayfinding is really, really important. And and I do like the outside controls of, of parking, and I like the valet being outside rather than inside, I see the point, and I think it's a more controlled environment, and less conflicts not being in the garage, I think that's a very tight space. Again, I've walked by this building a lot, and I've seen inside and off, and wonder how that garage works, it's such a tight space. And I think queuing up cars across the sidewalk would really, really be a problem with that, and I think a valet will get the car in the garage and out of the way as soon as possible, so I, I think it's a good idea to have it on the street. And to me, I look at things like this as traffic calming. I think Hollis can be a very busy street and a fast street, and I think when there's a lot of activity on the street, and we kind of did this whole thing with the parking lot where Nordstrom is. We constrained the size of that, we kind of made it a little bit more difficult for cars to navigate, and we slowed down the traffic then. I think this kind of could work also as a traffic calming as well. And just, I think with the program that they're going to have to notify their people on how to get in and out, and once people come to the building, a lot of their customers are going to be repeat patients, so I think once they get it down, they'll have a better understanding of how it works. And I have one more comment. Yeah, that's it for now, thanks.
So I, I think that the, that the solution that the architect and the applicant have worked out worked, and I think it provides a, frankly, a superior answer to the, to the problem of how do you get into the building? I think it provides more control and, or a more pleasant experience for those coming to be serviced by the building. And then the canopy itself, I think, is a, is a very nice design, it's a, it, it adds a level of scale and detail to the building that benefits the building, and provides a, I think, really a public-friendly event where you get, if in the event of rain, you get this momentary shelter, and at night, you have an illuminated pathway to walk under. And the, the, the columns protruding up beyond the canopies and serving as masts for the support struts, or rather, the support cables, I think that's a, that's a very nice, nice structural solution, allows you to cantilever at the ends, and provides a nice, fine-line detail that adds to the overall composition. I would invite the, the applicant to consider making use of these columns, you have seven columns, as perhaps, treat them as cylindrical canvases for the application of public art. And again, I understand that what, what your current plans are regarding public art sounds nice, but I think this would be an interesting thing to look at and consider and see if it's a feasible approach for you. And that would, and I'm, I would imagine that in Emeryville, there is a metalworking artist with whom you might be able to get some advice from regarding how to apply sleeves of, you know, with metal cutouts and so forth, illuminated from behind, that would then turn these, these structural, this structural solution into an artistic solution as well that can be immediately enjoyed by all the public, those who are driving by, those who are walking by. They can see it and they can even touch it as they walk by. Anyway, that's, that's just, you know, an idea for you to take for what it's worth.
Charlie, is there any plan for where the delivery trucks for the restaurant are supposed to go?
I'm not aware of that. Do you know, Sarah?
Well, there's a yellow zone that's to remain. Would you like me to show you the slide?
Yeah.
The only question is, where is that slide?
The beginning.
Would that, that's in your slideshow, right?
No, I'm in the packet right now.
I think it's A5.
Oh, well, let me go the other direction, let's try that.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, so this is existing, and there is a yellow zone here, and then it's all green to the parking garage almost. And then proposed, the yellow remains, yellow loading zone, and the green area is shortened for the valet to the north of that.
Is there any possibility of getting one tree at the northern end of this sidewalk? It looks like it's, it becomes wide enough again on the.
Kind of where the two men are standing?
Yeah. Because we're taking out a lot of trees.
Where's the cover page?
Two trees.
A1. Where the two men are standing underneath the sign, can we put a figure?
Yeah.
Or block the sign on the wall.
Well, if they don't know where they're going.
There's a landscaping plan towards the end of this packet also, so I'm going to flash through this real quick. Maybe.
I mean, we've totally wiped out the sidewalk landscaping, planting material. I don't know if there's any way to grow plants on the columns or not, but it'd be nice to get some greenery back in here.
Any other comments?
No, that's fine.
I think that that's worth looking at, whether there can be a tree gotten in the northern end of that expanded sidewalk area. I would like to see the use of the railings minimized. I like the idea of possibly using the columns for public art, but I also like the idea of possibly using the columns for some kind of vines or some kind of greenery because Hollis can be kind of austere. It's narrow and it's got buildings right up to the edges along most of the length of it. So it would be nice to be able to see something more green. And I still have concerns about the surrounding neighborhood circulation, the Bicycle Boulevard circulation, and how that really is going to function and whether people are going to go in the directions they're supposed to go. But willing to take a look at it.
Could you put Slide A11 up, Sarah? Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, thanks. My first comment, and I know I've shared this before, but I want to share this with the rest of the commission. I'm happy with the canopy. To me, the canopy has one shortfall. It's the one-foot gap between the canopy and the building. And I understand why the canopy shouldn't be attached to the building for wind purposes. The reverberation of those things is sensitive equipment in the building. But I don't get the point of walking a person who's going into or out of outpatient care. I envision my grandmother getting the last foot of her entry in or the first step out wet, especially since the water will run down this building and will pool at the foot of those doors. And so I think that there should be a small awning, a tap, very small, that can be designed to go over the door spaces that would redirect rain coming down that building onto, it doesn't have to connect to the canopy, but direct it off of it and onto the canopy so that you have a continuous redirection of water away from the entry spaces so that it's dry and the ground has a better chance of being dry at the entry spaces. So I think there should be something there. I have a concern with the valet situation. My concern is this, is that, and this will be probably more appropriate as a condition of approval down the line, but just to continue to think through, what I didn't hear in the presentation this evening was you have people come out and are ready to have their car collected. We have a queue for drop-off, but we don't have a queue for pickup. That queue is inside the parking structure. And so what happens when you've pulled one car out onto the street in the one space that's available for pickup? And that person has either gone to the restroom or is not paying attention or is speaking to someone inside the building and doesn't step out to get their car. Now you have queues, a queue lining up of vehicles inside the building. That does a couple of things. One, that throws off the availability of individual valets to actually move vehicles because now you have to either continue to stay with that vehicle because you don't want to have someone who's third in line inside the garage decide to cut the line and go into your incoming space. So I'm concerned about the internal queuing of a vehicle line. I understand that there's a number of features inside the building to alert people to when their vehicle is ready. It doesn't mean people will come out. So I think that that has to be thought through, and I think that there will have to be some sort of condition that would give the planning director the authority to require an increase in the number of staff, whether that's overall or at periods of the day, in order to ensure that there's adequate movement of vehicles coming out of the building, not just going in. Other than that, you know, the only thing I just think we should be thinking about a little more, I'm totally fine with the signage. I do think that it would be good to Commissioner Donaldson's prior point. I think there should be signs, and I do appreciate Mr. Olson's point. People who come here, I mean, taking my grandfather to cancer outpatient stuff regularly, they do become acclimated and they orient to this circumstance. But I do think that having signs that wayfind back to I-80 upon exit, I think is extremely important here. And so I think that that, and I see the signs that this plan has are tasteful, are the right sizes, are good. But I think the wayfinding sign has to be added to both, whether that's putting it on the 59th Street arm that comes off. We have armed lights at 59th, right?
Yes, I believe we do.
Okay. So I think there has to be directions like this way to I-80. In some way or another, it may be confusing to people who've just gone through the intersection who weren't coming from Stanford Health. We have to think about that. But I think that there needs to be wayfinding signs back to I-80. And other than that, the only thing I don't think we've thought about a lot, I just, I have to think about it some more, is the people who work in the building and their interaction with the neighborhood as pedestrians. They're going all the way over to Horton Street in some cases. We're going to be redirecting people. We have to think of the whole picture, I think, and we're going to redirect people through the path that all these people walk through. I think those types of things aren't addressed adequately in this or most transit plans. Most transit studies don't sit there and say, they look at what's the current use. Well, you're not just putting traffic on the street and you're putting people on the street in isolation. You're actually going to have, at two different points in the day, a large number of people migrate on 59th Street to Horton Street. And so if you have people in rush hour and you also have, and leaving what's going to be a transit center, which people will leave the transit center and go to Pallado Street also, I mean, you're, 59th Street is not going to be the same if, when you think about it. And then you'll have, you know, you have a stop sign crossing at 59th and Pallado, and people are going to walk it. So I just think that we have to think a little more about it because I don't think that's the one weakness of the transit study, in my opinion, is that the transit study doesn't adequately address the adjoining, to Commissioner Donaldson's point, some of the adjoining streets, I think, need to be studied a little more.
Thank you.
Chair Gunkel, if I could just respond to one of Commissioner Patter's comments.
Sure.
I believe you indicated there was one parking space for pickup at the valet. I believe there are two.
Is there two? Okay, thank you, I'm corrected. There's two. Still want to look at it, but there's two. That's good to know.
Well, doesn't the person wanting to get their car go to the station right at the pickup, at the delivery point?
Yeah, my point was, let's say that they pull two cars out, and those individuals are in the restroom or still coming down for some reason.
No, they can't order their car until they get down to the station, which is right on the sidewalk.
Well, my understanding is that there, you can request it. Do you want to come up and answer that? I believe you can answer it in the building. Please, come on up.
He can respond to many of these questions.
That's great, thanks. Come on up and just address when people request their car, at what point, and do they have to be on the curb to request their car?
Yes, so they have to be on the curb to request for their cars.
Okay, that's good to know. I didn't, that's not my understanding before. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I struggle, I actually struggle with a number of components of this. I understand that the existing garage probably doesn't provide on its own sufficient parking for all of the patients, and that it could be confusing for patients coming in. I also feel like this is kind of a takeover of a public area to a certain degree and that it creates a lot of traffic issues. I asked the applicant if they had met with Bureau yet, and I don't believe they had, regarding the existing parking and the removal of some of the existing parking that along Hollis. I regularly see that completely full of cars for people going to Bureau, so we're going to be losing at least five, you know, six, you know, at least five spaces. I regularly leave the Chevron at the corner, which is much closer to the intersection, and don't have issues turning either direction onto Hollis. And just the natural, you know, leaving this building, I would imagine the vast majority of people leaving the building would want to leave the garage and turn south on Hollis and head straight to Powell and get on the freeway. And I personally don't think that Hollis, I mean, the traffic on Hollis is pretty inconsistent, even during rush hour. There's lots of gaps in it. So eliminating that opportunity for people to just turn and go directly to the freeway and routing them through, you know, one, I definitely want to make sure we don't route them around to Doyle, which is a Bicycle Boulevard, but then routing them all, you know, north on Hollis and then west and then, you know, on Pallado and then, you know, back over, you know, it's a little convoluted to me. I think it definitely would require very clear wayfinding if we're going to route people in that direction. Lots of, you know, different components of the design. I think, you know, in meeting with the applicant, I think we realized that the, you know, when you look at A20, it looks like there's a pretty significant elevation change between the sidewalk at the building and the sidewalk at the street. And I think that that elevation change is actually much less significant and is reflected in the renderings. I think that if we do allow this valet approach, I'd like to see the rails completely removed using planters to prevent people from falling. I'd actually like to see the ramps removed and just use curb ramps. You know, the signage, I feel like the monument sign kind of makes it feel like you're entering into a private area. I also, the location of the monument sign right in front of Bureau seems strange to me. I'd like to see it further to the north if it's going to exist, possibly smaller. The rest of the signage, I mean, we've been struggling with a lot of other signs up on tops of buildings, and now we're looking at another lit sign at the top of a building that I don't think has any purpose, other, you know, outside of daylight hours for the most part. I'd actually like to see that high sign not lit. And then when we have backlit signs, like the grocery outlet sign further down the street, they tend to look, just like kind of strip molly or something along those lines, I don't know. I mean, this one's a little bit more discreet, but the one that's at the entry, you know, ideally, I'd like to see it frontlit instead of backlit and have the upper, the high sign not lit at all. Yeah, I think, I mean, it's like, I understand the reason for it. I think that there's a lot of factors, like I think there need to be a lot of mitigating back, you know, a lot of mitigation to sort of resolve what we're doing, which is kind of unnatural, I feel, in a number of ways. And I think we would need to make sure that we do everything we can to really make this continue to feel like a public sidewalk, inviting to the general public, not like they're entering into a private, you know, valet area. And also to make sure that we don't make any more mistakes with regard to signage. Any other?
I have one follow-up comment. On Sheet A10, you show an elevation of the existing building and then the proposed building. And you show the doors, which you show main entrance on the north side, which I think is entrance A. And then you show relocated door on, to the, to the south end of the canopy, which I think is entrance B. And that door, entrance B, is right behind a column, whereas the entrance door A is between the two columns and just has a more satisfactory relationship to the columns outside. I can't tell what your room situation, space situation is like behind door B, except on rendering A20, it looks like it's a waiting room. And I guess I would ask you to consider relocating the door to the north to get it between the two columns as opposed to opening right onto the column. I think that would be a, just a more satisfactory relationship to the, to the street.
Any other comments?
I do want to say that I share Commissioner, Chair Gunkel's concern about the lighted sign on the south side of the building because I really would want to not have it lit if that is up there and want to see the sightlines conveyed very clearly because there are residences across the street and across the greenway, and we have too many signs.
I agree with that.
Any other commissioners?
The applicant have anything further for the commission or any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
All right. So then, let's move to our next study session, which is short-term rentals.
This is her item, so I will be presenting it on her behalf. Just let me say that the lion's share of the work on this was done by one of our planning interns, Genevieve Muncy, who, as luck would have it, has now gotten a real job and is working as a transportation consultant for an engineering firm in Walnut Creek. So she's not here to present her stellar work to you. Likewise, Diana supervised Genevieve on this project, and she's not here either. So I'm going to do my best to represent the two of them. Hopefully, I'll be able to respond to your questions, probably not as well as they could, but I'll do my best. So we have been tasked by the city council with looking into the question of short-term rentals in Emeryville. A short-term rentals means renting out a room in a residential unit or renting out the entire residential unit, and this is for a period of 30 days or less. The issue of corporate housing has also been brought up during the course of this study, which actually is typically for a period of 30 days or more. So it doesn't really fall into the realm of short-term rentals. So we acknowledge that it is a phenomenon, but it is not something that we have included in this study. Some long-term residents are away from their homes for a few weeks of the year, and some owners who do not reside in their units at all would rent their units out for short-term rentals. Many of these short-term rentals are facilitated by online platforms. The most popular online platform is Airbnb. We estimate that there are approximately 100 short-term rentals in Emeryville, and the breakdown of the various platforms is over here. 75 Airbnb, VRBO, which stands for Vacation Rental by Owner, has about 11, FlipKey, Wimdo, TripAdvisor, HomeAway, and HomeExchange. You may be familiar with these. I'm not that familiar with them. This is a screenshot from Airbnb's website showing the units that they had available at a particular time in Emeryville.
Does that want a boat?
Yeah.
May, very well maybe. Yeah, it looks like there's a couple that are boats. And you'll note in the staff report that BCDC does not allow that. This is, this table just kind of summarizes the breakdown. This is for Airbnb units, which is the lion's share, about 70. This is for Airbnb units, which is the lion's share, about 75 out of the 100 units in town. So there's about 42 of the 75 that are for the entire unit, about 30 that are just for individual room within the unit, and three that are sort of a roommate situation where they, you would share a room with somebody else. And then going across the other way, 43 of these units are always available, nine of them are usually available, 23 of them are occasionally available, probably when the resident goes away for a few weeks or, or something. We did a survey of most of the multifamily, multi-unit residential properties in Emeryville to find out what their, what their current status in terms of short-term rentals is and what their opinions of the managers were about how the city should regulate short-term rentals. We surveyed 13 of 26 condominium complexes and nine of the 10 major apartment complexes, also a number of live-work complexes and both marinas. We found that of the 28 facilities that we surveyed, 27 of them do not allow short-term rentals. And this is either in the HOA rules or the CCNRs, Governance Conditions and Restrictions for the Project, or in the case of rental units, it's just a policy that they have, and it's written into the lease terms for people who rent apartments. The property managers told us that many residents object to short-term rentals for a variety of reasons, including security and safety, maintenance of the common areas, noise, disruptions, seeing unfamiliar faces in the hallways, not following the rules of the HOA, and parking problems, parking issues, parking congestion. We asked them what their opinion was about how the city should regulate short-term rentals. Interestingly, even though almost all of them prohibit them in their own rules, 16 thought the city should allow short-term rentals in some form, six thought the city should not, and six were not sure. Of those, of those who thought that they should be allowed, eight said they should only be allowed in single-family houses, four said they should be allowed in all kinds of units, and two said they should be allowed in condominiums. And one property owner said they might want to convert some of their vacant apartments to short-term rentals. This matrix summarizes some of the surrounding cities, there's other cities in the Bay Area, smaller cities, in terms of how they currently regulate short-term rentals. So over here on this side, we have one city that allows them, and that's Albany. They allow them in single-family homes. At this end, on the right side, we have one city that prohibits them, and that is Larkspur. And all of the other cities in between do not currently regulate them but are in various stages of thinking about it. These are not planning to regulate it. These cities said they'd evaluate it later. These cities' staff is discussing the possibility. These cities, the planning commissioner or city council is considering regulations. And I guess in Piedmont, the commission or council is considering a prohibition. In larger cities, Petaluma allows them with regulations, San Rafael is discussing it, Newark prohibits them, Oakland does not regulate them currently, and Berkeley is considering regulation. It turns out that the Petaluma regulations and the regulations that Berkeley is considering are similar. So this is the characteristics of that. They require or would require a permit and registration with a fee. Hosted versus non-hosted means whether the owner or lesee of the unit is present during the rental. So a non-hosted rental basically means that you're renting out, that you're renting the entire unit. And a not, a non-hosted rental is the entire unit, and a hosted rental is for a room within the unit. So non-hosted unit rentals are limited to 90 days per year, and hosted, in meaning that the owner or less, lessie is present, are unlimited. The hosts must give the noise regulations to their guests, and they must or should notify adjacent neighbors. In terms of our own regulations, we do not currently regulate short-term rentals explicitly. We do have a definition of residential uses that says they are primarily non-transient. We also have a definition of lodging, which is for 30 days or less, short, sleeping accommodations, basically hotels and motels. We also have a definition of bed and breakfast, which says lodging in a part of a residential unit. Our bed and breakfast requirements say that a bed and breakfast unit must have a separate entrance on the street, that the owner must reside in the unit containing the bed and breakfast, that it's, requires a conditional use permit in residential zones, and it's not allowed in the marina zone. So it's not exactly the same as short-term rentals. And by the way, to my knowledge, we don't have any, any of these, and we have not had any inquiries about them. Occasionally, we get inquiries about short-term rentals, and we point people to these bed and breakfast requirements, and they say, no, that's, that's not what I'm doing. Other Emeryville ordinances that would have impacted short-term rentals are our noise ordinance, for one, which limits excessive or annoying noise to 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM Monday through Friday, and 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM on the weekends. There are also taxing and license provisions in our code, which would, technically would require a business license for short-term rentals, although there, of the 100 short-term rentals that currently exist in Emeryville, I'm pretty sure that not any of them have a business license. And they would also be required to pay transient occupancy tax, the same as a hotel, and obviously they're not doing that either. There are benefits to short-term rentals. They can help residents to meet increasing housing costs. They can increase social interaction between travelers and the hosts. They're less expensive than hotels and increased tourism. And they're an option for new residents in town who are trying to find permanent housing. They can stay in a short-term rental while they're looking for a condominium or an apartment. There are also concerns about short-term rentals, which I've already sort of mentioned in the survey. Neighborhood safety and comfort, tenant safety, not missing out on the transient occupancy tax that we should be collecting from them, and also significantly, removal of units and rooms from the long-term housing market. We estimate that about 25 units would be removed from the housing stock, and this is for the units that are, where they're renting out the entire unit. This is about 3/10 of 1% of the total number of dwelling units in the city. And then about 24 rooms, these are in the hosted units, are being removed from the roommate pool. We've identified some options that you all can think about. Let me note that we are also scheduling a study session before the city council, which I believe is scheduled for May, and we will convey to the city council your recommendations. The options we've identified are keeping the regulations as they are, which is to say they're basically silent on this issue, or prohibit short-term rentals altogether, excuse me, or allow them and regulate, allow and regulate them. If we were to allow and regulate them, we would require a permit and/or registration, and we would address, attempt to address impacts on neighbors, guest safety, and on the housing stock. The way you regulate impacts on the neighbors is the host would be required to give the noise ordinance to their guests, and if there were persistent complaints, we could revoke the permit for that particular unit. For security, the host would check the guest ID and keep a list of their guests. The guest, the host would be required to provide parking for the guests, and we could require an entrance on the street in order to maintain neighborhood character. In terms of safety, the host would need to post a diagram of exit routes and fire extinguisher locations. In terms of the housing stock impacts, we could limit unhosted rental units to 90 days per year, and we could also limit hosted rental of rooms to 90 days per year or some other length of time. So based on all of that, we have the following questions for you. Should Emeryville allow short-term rentals? If so, what impacts should these regulations address? Should the unhosted unit rentals be allowed with a time limit? Similarly, should hosted room rentals have a time limit? Should single-family and condos and apartments be regulated differently? Or, and/or, should units with private entrances and those with entrances on common areas be regulated differently? And are there any other issues that we have not identified that you would like to discuss? So that concludes my presentation, and I will attempt to answer whatever questions you may have.
Are there questions for staff?
I believe we have a couple of speaker cards on this item.
Yes, we do. Thank you.
I'm just wondering if the, if there are short-term, short-term rentals that are regulated in all these different manners, what does that do to the city staffing levels for enforcement?
It would be an enforcement challenge. We might need additional staffing. We haven't really delved into that. I would say, well, clearly, the, the least intensive impact on staff would be to do nothing, to leave our regulations as they are, which is to say silent on the whole issue. If we prohibit them, there is some impact on staffing where we would have to enforce that prohibition. If we learned that there were regulation, were short-term rentals that obviously weren't allowed, we would have to go after them. I think regulating them, allowing them and regulating them would probably be the most impactful on staff, because that would involve, you know, getting a, a registration from every single one of these units and then making sure they got their business license, making sure they were paying their transient occupancy tax, making sure they were following whatever rules we established, all that kind of thing. So that would require a lot of staffing, a lot of staff effort, I believe.
Any other questions for staff?
Charlie, beyond the activities you just described that would be required of staff, which, as you're describing them, they are essentially documentation activities, correct?
Well, yeah, for the most part. I mean, we probably would need to do site visits and see what was going on in some cases.
Can you, can you describe any other costs that might be associated with the regulation?
Well, policing, basically.
So policing in...
Sending somebody out to...
It's time away from regular staff work, so he has to go out and take a report or someone made a complaint, he has to go examine it and ask people questions. That's time he would be spending here, so it delays all the work of the city.
There would be some impacts on other departments as well. I doubt if police would get involved too much, but finance department certainly would get involved in the issuing of the business licenses and collecting of the transient occupancy tax and all that kind of thing.
Has there been any history so far of complaints or problems related to short-term rentals?
No, I'm not, I'm not aware of, well, there have, there have been, we have heard concerns raised by the city council, specifically from Watergate, where, by the way, they are not allowed by their HOA rules. Staff ourselves have not received any complaints that I'm aware of.
Thank you, Charlie.
You're welcome.
So then I'd like to open up the public comment. I believe we've got two cards here. Come on down.
Hi, my name is Fran Chapetta, and I do live at Watergate, and I am the Airbnb self-appointed police. And we have many Airbnbs, and I have personally busted about 30 of them. And there, you mentioned most, Charlie, you mentioned most of the things that should have been mentioned, but I'd like to add a couple of things, especially with other issues. Do realize that there are professional Airbnbers out, out in this country who fly from place to place, rent units from an owner, and then turn around and Airbnb it, and we've found about fully half of them, the owners are not aware that their properties are being used that way, so it's something to consider. Your business license and hotel tax revenues, also, people do not report this income to the IRS either, so this is income that is coming in that should be reported. It takes too many units off the market. Berkeley has 1,100 listings, and in a city that is desperate for housing, that's just way too much. Also, consider that these rentals are not inspected, so you don't know about the safety issues there, how dirty they are, and all, and that kind of thing. So there's just other things to consider, and I'm very concerned. I also would like to know if the city council, if you do decide to host these, if that would override our CCNRs, and I sure hope not, because it's a tough battle trying to keep everything under control. And I'll tell you, it makes, it does make people miserable with the parties that are thrown and other things that are, are done. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mary Farrell. I live at Five Admiral in Watergate, and as an Emeryville citizen, I hope that the short-term sublets such as Airbnb and VRBO, I hope you all take the stand not to allow them. But I understand that you can make money on it, and if it balances out, it might be a good business proposition for the city. So if you do allow it, I'm doubling down on what Fran was saying, is that we want to make sure that this does not affect our CCNRs or our rules, because we do not want short-term rentals in our condos. And that's the way it is. And even so, we have to enforce it. And we, we have a group of people who look on the internet, find them, and turn them into the, the Watergate office, and they send them letters asking them to comply. But there have been issues. As a matter of fact, I live in a studio, and below me is a studio that is owned by an absentee landlord. And he rented it to a woman who does this as a business, as Fran described. She puts it on Airbnb, and I've had, it's like a hotel, late parties, loud phone calls, screaming children, people in and out. I didn't know whether the person had moved or not. There was no notification of us, and it's against the rules. It took them a couple of months to evict this woman. And then she went across the street and tried to do it in another Watergate condo. And that owner, when he realized that she was going to do this, even though she'd signed the contract, she would not short-term lease it, he finally got rid of her too. It took not months, it took him a, you know, week to get rid of her. But this is a real problem, and it's not only that, there's other safety concerns about condos. Strangers coming in, they may be given a list of rules, they may read them and they may not, but they may leave the stove on, they may leave the, the sink on, and it's going to flood the neighbors, and then we've got liability issues. At least the people who are here for a long period of time know that they have some responsibilities. And we've read horror stories of things in San Francisco. The incident that happened below me is when I went to some neighbors, and I said, this is wrong, we need to do something. And I went to the board, they said start a citizens group. We did. We call ourselves the Residents Oversight Group, and we have branched out onto other issues. But it was precisely the Airbnb situation that started the, the unpleasant feelings and the need for control. And you have a big job. I hope you make some good decisions and at least protect our CCNRs. Thank you.
Mary, can I ask you a question?
Yes, certainly.
You approached Airbnb, and how do they respond?
We did. And the board of Watergate also had their lawyers write letters to the organizations, the internet organizations that support this, and we got negative letters back that said that they have nothing to do with that. They do say on their rules for people who sign up that they can only be in condos that where they are allowed. But, you know, people are ignoring this, and we have had repeat offenders. We did have a few months where we got rid of them all. Now we have five. And two of them are, four of them are repeat offenders?
Yes.
Four of them are repeat offenders and one's a new one. And a lot of people start this innocently, and then they'll get a letter from someone saying, you know, Watergate doesn't allow this, and someone's, oh my goodness, I didn't know, and they'll take it off. But there are some people, we went ahead to go through the disciplinary letter thing with the Watergate office, and even then, you know...
What you, your oversight group contacts, as soon as you see it listed?
Yes.
You call Airbnb, but they...
No, yes, we, we already tried that. Our lawyers did that, and their lawyers said, yeah, nothing, they can't do anything about that. You don't have any, have any rights over us. What we did is that we had our lawyer, if, I didn't see the letter, but I was told... but I was told that we were asking for them to prohibit leasing on the four streets of Watergate, because only Watergate condos are on those streets. So they say, if you see a listing that comes up on Anchor, Admiral, Commodore, whatever, Captain, if you see anything on those streets, that is not allowed, and you need to block that leaser. And they said, "We don't do that." And, you know, they're a multi-billion dollar business. And we are just citizens trying to live our lives. And you have a big decision to make. And I thank you for listening to us.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
So we'll go to Commissioner comments.
Thank you for letting me start on this one. First of all, I want to thank Mary and Fran, because it's almost 10:30, and you sat here for four hours for your couple of minutes of public comment. That's, I really appreciate that. I really do. And I just want to note that, because it's an empty place except for the two of you. This is on my list of like, things that drive me crazy. So thank you for coming. I have a lot I would like to say about it, but I'll be pretty straight to the point. For all the reasons that were in the presentation and the report, these are a disaster on the whole. Not in all cases, but on the whole. I think they should be completely prohibited in multifamily structures. I think we should regulate them as they relate to single-family homes. They affect affordability to begin with. I realize it's only 3/10 of a percent of the units that are on the market. But in the cumulative in the Bay Area, in the middle of a housing crisis, the more units that are off the market, the higher the cost of housing is. It's no question to that. So they decrease affordability in our community, which is the single biggest thing people talk about when they talk about housing in our community. They are extremely dangerous for public safety, for all the reasons Mary and Fran noted. I lived in a building here in Emeryville for three years, where we had a neighbor who illegally made Airbnb rentals. I had a completely stoned individual appear at my door in his underwear at 6:00 in the morning, pounding on my door, asking for eggs. Did not live in the building, was picked up, picked up the spot on his way back from Burning Man. Totally ridiculous, totally ridiculous. And to the point that's been made, you know, in the situation of a condominium building, you know, I can laugh about it now, but looking at the people, I was not so thrilled. But in the situation of a condominium building, there's something to be said. Owners treat the building differently. You own the unit, okay, you didn't go, if you wanted to go and live in a hotel, you would go live in a hotel, right? You wouldn't go buy your house. You have made an investment. I don't think it's appropriate for a homeowner who lives in a multifamily structure and shares walls and common areas and all those things to have to be subjected to the entrepreneurial aspects of a person who wants to run a hotel. Go build a hotel if you want a hotel. Go live in a hotel if you want a hotel. That's not the purpose of a condominium. It's not a residential purpose, which, as Charlie noted in the presentation, is in the slides. It's not a residential purpose. It's not. It doesn't matter that somebody is staying there. It's not a residential purpose. In the case of apartment buildings, the problem with apartment buildings is that if you are leasing your space to somebody else, you are most likely doing it illegally. 90% of leases in California or more have prohibitions on subleasing. So everyone is probably doing it illegally. And then the leaser is not, the less C, is not actually screening and vetting and doing background checks of the person they lease to. And so you are exposing other people who have a right and an expectation of safety and privacy in a rental structure to people who are not vetted by the apartment owner, who are, their apartment owner has got liability, which is why they, all of them, don't allow it, because they have liability for those things. So multifamily structures, I think, it should be an absolute prohibition. We already talked about the transitional occupancy tax that's not being collected. I mean, that's revenue for the city. Some people view Airbnb and Uber and these other things as completely entrepreneurial. And if you regulate them, then you're crushing creativity. I don't agree with that at all. Everything in history that is a good idea ultimately gets regulated. Hotels at one point got regulated too. And so Airbnb needs to be regulated. It doesn't have a legitimate purpose in multifamily structures, whether they're condo or apartment, in my opinion. But then I think for single-family homes, I think what people do with their single-family structure, a detached structure, is their private business. And I think that, to the extent that those should be regulated, I think that we should, we should charge them the equivalency to the transient occupancy tax for the number of days they choose to make their home available on Airbnb. I think it should be treated in the same way as a hotel for that purpose. They should have a business license, because they're running a business essentially. It is revenue. It should be reportable to the IRS. But I don't think we should deprive a person who chooses to own a single-family structure that's not connected to, it isn't a neighborhood, but it would be no different, in my opinion, than having your, letting your cousin crash on your couch for weeks at a time. That's your, it's your property. I think that's different than choosing to live in a common-use building where you live with other people and you voluntarily chose that lifestyle. That's a completely different thing. So those are my comments. I'm sure I can go on for an hour about this. It's the chair's choice.
Not right now. Maybe, maybe at the end, after the commissioner comments.
I think that the concerns of having short-term rentals in multifamily buildings are real and serious. And it's a much more complicated situation than with a single-family house. I am not, at this point, against the idea of having regulated short-term rentals in single-family buildings. And I think that if they are regulated, they should be taxed. They should be having business licenses and all of those things. The hosted ones, I think, are less of a problem. But I, whether you have a hosted room being rented out in a multifamily unit or not, I'm a little bit more on the fence on that one.
Yeah, as the, as the project manager for the HOA of the place that I live in, I did get the call and got, went through all the questions, and it was very thorough. And I appreciate that. And what was interesting is, we, we don't allow short-term rentals in where I live. But at the same time, so that's set up in the CCNRs that was, you know, it was established by the HOA. And I think that that, you know, for HOAs to create that in their CCR, CCNRs, that's, should be set, and that should not be impacted by the, by any kind of decision that we make. I do, you know, I definitely understand homeowners, whether they're in single-family homes or in condominiums, if they're going to be out of town for a short period of time and they want to, you know, rent their space out, I understand that. I like the Petaluma regulations. I think that we could add a few things on to those. I do think differentiating between hosted and non-hosted spaces is important. I don't think differentiating between condos and single-family homes is important or should be, I mean, I think condos can already, you know, establish whether or not they're going, you know, whether or not, as an HOA, they're going to allow short-term rentals. I don't think that apartments or any rental property should be able to be subleased to short-term rentals. Just trying to answer all the questions here. I do think that the process of allowing someone to have a short-term rental should be relatively thorough. I think there needs to be an inspection. I think there needs to be confirmation that any work that's been done there has been permitted, so that, basically, building permits, so that there's not, there not being, you know, someone's not converting illegally, you know, illegally converting a space in their house for short-term rentals. And I don't think that there necessarily needs to be a stipulation that there's a private entrance in order for the, a short-term rental to be allowed at that, you know, at that place.
Well, I live in Watergate, and I know these ladies. And I've realized it's a very serious problem. And there's really con artists going out there who rent the unit and then sub-rent it. And I think the best thing would be to only allow hosted room rental and only in single-family homes. And I don't know that private entrances matter, really matters, but definitely they have to be licensed and pay taxes.
Well, I feel very uninformed on the subject. I know it's, it's a big issue in San Francisco between the short-term rental companies and the hotels and so forth. Was there, was there any outreach to the hotels in the, in the city to ask them what they had?
I don't believe we have included that at this point.
Well, their response might be predictable nonetheless.
Yes. I believe, actually, I think there is something in the staff report that mentions about hotels. I take that back. I think we actually maybe did contact them, because we found that they were primarily business travelers and that the short-term rentals were primarily leisure travelers.
Yeah.
I think that's in the report somewhere.
Well, looking at your map of costs per night, they're actually, the hotels are pretty competitive with these.
Right.
Airbnbs. So I don't know why one makes a choice for one over another. In any case, I was impressed to hear that the, that so many of the multifamily buildings in Emeryville, or projects in Emeryville prohibit short-term rentals. And apparently, the problem is that the prohibition does not seem to be terribly effective. And nonetheless, the, it is against the rules of the organization. So I don't know. I guess my instinct is to, is to not be sympathetic to the idea of inventing and laying on another layer of regulation onto something that might be best dealt with by those multifamily projects by themselves. Maybe by making their enforcement policies more, more robust. For example, the HOA might decide that it would levy a fine against the owners that, whether knowingly or unknowingly, leased out their space to one of these con artist types. And maybe the, the individual condominium owners might have in their leases that the 50% of the deposit money, security deposit money, would be automatically forfeited in the event it was determined that the person you're leasing it to was an Airbnb front. You know, something like that. My point is that it might, what we're talking about is transferring the, transferring the problem to the city and making it a, the obligation possibly of the city's staff and perhaps the police. I mean, what happens if you discover that your neighbor has rented out to somebody who wants eggs at 6:00 AM in the morning? Once, once we establish that it's illegal to have these types of rentals, do you then call the police?
I think you call the city, it's a civil matter. And I think what happens is you have a one-time warning for an owner and occupant who needs to become aware of a law that passes in the city. But the question, to me, is a contrast between, it's one thing to have the city have to enforce something that has all kinds of nuances to it. Was it more than 90 days? Was it, was it hosted or not hosted at that time? Those types of things are what make it very difficult for staff, as opposed to a straight-up prohibition on a type of housing where after a person gets a warning, why should the homeowner, who is a resident in our city, why should they and their association have to pay lawyers to go and fetter out people who are breaking not just a CCNR, but now an ordinance? The city should be able to say, "You know what? You got your warning. You're a repeat offender. It's a $1,000 fine." This shouldn't be the obligation of Watergate or PPP or any other place, in my opinion, who has people who live here, who pay the taxes here, who own a property here, to have to also now police the fact that they have people in, there are people in their own building. You could say, you could make that case, I suppose. But my point of view on it is, is that it is, it is so easy on the internet to list this thing under, like, to the points that were made. You can list this thing, you can put somebody in it, you can give them the warning. They pop up in the next building or on the next floor. And the truth of the matter is, once that person is identified, the building should be able to say to the city, "Please come out and deal with this." They should, they should have to bring the proof that that's happened to the city. The city shouldn't have to do that work. The city should come out, give the warning letter, give the person the chance to respond if they want to rebut it and make a decision as to whether it happened or not. But a second offense, it should be a fine. That, that's, that's how, and the city is prerogative to enforce it, you know, and the building can choose to assist them in that. And that's, to me, that's an appropriate regulation, because there's no way, if you just push this all on an HOA, I mean, there's a lot of things in bylaws and CCNRs that get violated all the time, right? There are a lot of things. But when you think about the gravity of those things, so is a person's dog over 25 pounds? Like, nobody goes and puts the scale out at the front door and says, "Oh, Fido's 28 pounds. Sorry, it's a, it's a fine," right? But there's nothing that's as serious to the health of a community, in my opinion, as having a place where someone calls home, subject to being a transient location, where any person, you don't know what your neighbor is doing and who's going to be there tomorrow, and whether they have keys and what they have keys to, and what they're doing, and whether they even know or appreciate what the rules of the building are, the HOA or the, or a leased property, for that matter. And I think that should be penalized by the city, because it's also eating away at the city's ability to collect transient occupancy tax, business license fees that pay for the very services that residents expect and enjoy. I feel very strongly about this. As a landlord-tenant attorney for over 10 years, this is a huge problem. It may not appear by the numbers to be a huge problem in this report, but regionally, this is a huge problem. And it's balancing the rights of a homeowner in a single-family situation. I appreciate that. I don't like to encumber a person's right to do what they want with their property. But when you live in a multifamily structure, you co-sign into a different type of community living where other people have rights too, and those have to be balanced. So I think that, yes, the city should have, should be able to prohibit this for the health of the community, because it actually reduces, in the long run, the calls to the police department, because there's a weird guy wanting eggs in his underwear at 6:00 AM. Those types of things go away when you adequately enforce things proactively. And I think the easiest way to do it is a straight prohibition and not make it complicated for staff. That's my feeling. Sorry, Commissioner Keller hasn't had a chance to speak. I'd really like to hear him.
And I think our city attorney would like to say something too.
And also, I think Commissioner Banta has it.
Is not finished.
Oh, sorry.
I'll just, I'll finish up very briefly here. I obviously need to educate myself more about the subject. But again, my instinct is to be leery of, of creating another regulation that, so much of which is, the money that's being collected is being paid as the cost of collection itself. And I just, that's, that's my instinct on the subject.
And before Andrea says, just quickly, I think we all need to educate ourselves a little more. We all can be very passionate about something. And when we're that passionate about something, we forget there's a flip side of a coin, which I'm going to illustrate as soon as Andrea gets her turn.
Well, I was going to offer up that I can speak a little bit to enforcement and also the fees and fines.
Can we do that after I have my chance to talk?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So I'd like to, first of all, ask the city, is, nothing we do in terms of an ordinance will override any CCNRs. The CCNRs of a property basically are the rule, more so than if we allow these, we would not over, usurp the CCNRs by not allowing them.
Typically, the CCRs are considered private restrictions. And so they're between the HOA and the residents of the HOA. I haven't looked at those CCRs, so I don't want to offer any opinion as to how a city ordinance might affect those CCRs. But typically, they are private restrictions, enforced privately.
Okay. And if I could have you bring up Slide 6 on the... And while he's doing that, I want to say, if I were to say that I support a prohibition, I'd be a hypocrite. And what I've, first of all, I want to start off by saying is, I totally understand people's concerns that these are generally based on perceived fears or personal bad experiences that people have had, that they're legitimate and everything, but I think a lot of them are based on basically fears of what could happen. Everything that you guys have talked about, H20, could not only happen from a short-term rental person, it could also happen by a student at UC Berkeley, it could be a bad neighbor. I had a neighbor next door to us who played loud music. He was a legal renter. I could do nothing, even with our security department, to get him to turn that off. The person also filmed pornographic websites from his house. So there were constantly, he had guests coming in that were pretty much akin to hookers coming into his house. He was a legal renter. It had nothing to do with short-term. When I toured Europe, a year and a half ago, I did five cities, and I did every place Airbnb. So if you think I'm one of these type of people that you're having a problem with... So if you think I'm one of these type of people that you're having a problem with, when I leave for my trip in June, I'm going to Boston, New York, and Washington, D.C., every one of our places is Airbnb. Airbnb is cheaper than a hotel and it provides a lot more amenities than any hotel does. So I'd just like us to keep that in mind, you know, when we're looking at people at Airbnb, because Airbnb has a system. If you are a bad tenant and you trash from his apartment, the owner's going to tell Airbnb and you're not going to be able to rent through Airbnb anymore. So there are controls. So I, you know, I think the bigger issue of them renting, I think that's an issue that needs to maybe come at a state level or a federal level, that Airbnb really does need to respect CCNRs of buildings and they do need to stop renting or allowing clients to rent places that's against their CCNRs. That's a bigger issue. And that's a rights issue. And if we get into all the legal ramifications, I can understand how they don't get involved in that because they really can't. But I think they need to have a policy where they don't rent, where it's clearly defined. They should ask for a copy of the CCNRs of the building, something like that. But that's a bigger issue for later down the road. So to not be a hypocrite, I think the security, having people who are modeling for a pornographic website is certainly more of a security risk than myself renting an apartment for three days. I maintain every place, if I leave an Airbnb place trashed, I'm going to be billed for that. They have my bank card, they're going to bill me for that. If unfamiliar faces, in my building, we have 1,100 people, I mean, there is no way I know every face in that building. And there is a high occupancy rollover, especially since we have UC Berkeley and all the city colleges. So again, most, all of these things, parking, when I go, when I travel, I don't use a car. I'm totally on public transportation. So parking is not an issue with me as an Airbnb client. So I think we're basing a lot of our, you guys have bad experiences, there's no doubt. But I think a lot of it is based on the fears. And I believe what Commissioner Bata says, that owner of a property has a right to do with it what they want when they join a community like a condominium, there are certain regulations. I still think that person who owns that unit has some rights to do with that unit as they want in a controlled measure. So I don't agree with that condos or whatever should be left out. So with that said, if we want to go back to the list of questions of what the city is looking for from us in this, I believe that they should be allowed because, quite honestly, if they're breaking the laws of the CCNRs, they're going to break the law of city ordinance, you know, and they'd have to be caught in order to be fined or whatever. So I think what we should do is that they should be allowed in certain realms, and it may not be, maybe that apartments can't do it because that is subletting. So we have to find that ground. It has to be strongly regulated, they have to get a business license, they have to pay the equal and same transit occupancy tax that the hotels do. And I think on top of that, they can pay a fee, and that fee would be to hire a code enforcement officer, a part-time code enforcement officer, for the city to handle whatever ramifications these Airbnbs or short-term rentals provide. I think it's very easy to say, you know, there is a $20 fee on top of your license, on top of your TOT, that is going to pay us to administer this program, to administer this program. So I think there are ways to look at this. In a broader sense, I think it's an opportunity for the city to collect more funds for its general fund because our hotel, our transit occupancy tax is a large part of our general fund. And I think this could add to that. And I think it's going to be less of a problem because when you look at what Charlie said, 26 of the 27 multi-unit condos don't allow it in their CCNRs. So it's really in on issue. Because I think before the city, if we regulate it, before they give them the right to do that with a business license, et cetera, if it's against the CCNRs, they don't issue the permit. Boom, done. So, well, I...
We don't enforce CCNRs.
Right.
But is that enforcing the CCNRs just by not allowing or issuing a permit for that?
Well, if there was one condo development that allowed them in their CCNRs and another one that didn't, we would not differentiate between those two when somebody came in for a permit from the city.
Okay, so I think this is probably the same thing Airbnb has a problem with, why they can't regulate it. See, there's, no, but they can't, they probably can't for the same reason Charlie just said the city can't. I mean, those are legitimate issues that, you know, we can...
I think though...
Well, one thing we, excuse me, one thing we have discussed, actually, is on the application form to register an Airbnb, have a requirement that they get a signature from the property management, you know, indicating, you don't think so? Nope? Okay, never mind.
So this is the bigger issue that I think what we need to do is look at regulating them. Is this a possibility, and maybe it is just single-family homes because we don't have to deal with CCNRs, you know? I think we need to take the broader look at the other side of the coin. Is this something that we can benefit by regulating, by collecting a TOT? Because quite frankly, this is going to happen, illegal or illegal, it's going to happen. The place I rented in Paris, come to find out, the reason we couldn't find the guy is because he was on the down-low, he was renting and shouldn't have been. So it happens all over the world that way and it's going to continue to happen. But I think if we regulate it and allow people to happen in a measured way, we're going to benefit, we're going to have more benefits than negatives.
Clearly, we don't have consensus. But appreciate your comments. Was there...
You.
Attorney has a, attorney.
Oh, she wants to talk.
Can I just?
Yeah.
In reviewing the comments, there seems, for those that are inclined to allow short-term rentals, there seems to be a consensus that those in a multi-unit building should be treated differently than a single-family home.
I disagree.
You disagree?
I agree that apartments, that people should not be renting, renters should not be subleasing to short-term rentals. But I believe that if your condo's CCNRs allow for short-term rentals, that you should be allowed to, like, I believe that we should have regulations. And I believe that if your condo's CCNRs allow short-term rentals, that you should be able to have a short-term rental the same way you could if you had a single-family home.
I actually agree with that. I think if the building itself has not made a prohibition of it, I don't think we should trump the decision of the building owner on that. But if the building owner has, you know, I think that the prohibition should apply to any multifamily building that has chosen to adopt it. I mean, I think, to me, that's, to me, that's the situation. Like, the city should be able to come in and impose a civil penalty on a person who violates that. It appears to people like they're standing in for the HOA, I understand that. But I just absolutely don't think it should be left to the HOA to have to feder out what there's no other good legal remedy for. And I don't really, I mean, Commissioner Keller and I often either really do agree or really don't agree. And I really don't agree with you tonight. And because I think, I mean, I appreciate your comments, but I think, you know, your perception that it's our experience, I think it's your experience. I don't think all people who use Airbnb are bad. I don't think all people who lease on Airbnb are bad. I don't think you are a bad person for using it either. And I don't think my opinion is limited to my experience. My opinion was that before I had an encounter with someone in my building even. I also think that some of the things you mentioned, I don't think are the points that are being made. The comment about, you know, you could, someone does damage, they have your bank card, that's great between you and the owner, but that doesn't take care of the fact that there was a loud slammin' party next to their unit the night before.
How do you stop students from doing that? How do you stop just a bad neighbor who's disrespectful? It's equal.
Sure. Well, but I feel like there's a very fatalistic argument you're making, which is that it's going to happen anyway. Well, so drug use is illegal, but if you were to just, if you had people shooting up outside the building at PPP, I don't think, I would just tell you, well, don't do anything about it because people are going to use drugs anyway. I mean, I just feel like you can't make it so fatalistic that it's like it's not possible to do something.
It's not, I'm just saying that short-term rentals and long-term rentals, humans are humans and you can get a bad person or a good person in either way. And regulating out the short-person rental and you get a bad tenant that's long-term, they're harder to get out. If you have a tenant that's renting an apartment and he's bad and the owner is in New Orleans, good luck getting that person out there because that person doesn't give a damn.
That's true.
Short-term rental ends very quickly, and if they're doing something wrong, you could take it up with the owner.
It's true.
So it is equal.
I don't think it's equal for two reasons. One is because if you get one tenant for once a year, okay, and that's a bad tenant, you go through a process, it does take longer to get rid of that person.
If the landlord even cares to.
You're right. I'm not disagreeing with you on that. But if you have a different person a week, you have 52 people in a year, which the probability of having more bad people and more bad experiences is greater than rolling the dice with one person. And I also think that people who aren't actually coming there to live, when you come to live, people have a different sense of responsibility. Not all people, for sure. You have the student, you have the partier, but people who come for a brief period of time because it's their vacation or something else have a different attitude toward what they're doing there. So I don't, I don't view them as equal, actually. I don't think that's the case. But, I mean, we disagree on this, I just think that, I don't want to consume any more time on it, really, I think, but I just, I just definitely think it needs to be absolutely regulated, but I would prefer that we...
That we agree.
Yeah, that much we agree. And I would prefer that it be prohibited. I could be convinced that it should be for rental properties only or for ownership properties where a tenant of an ownership property is trying to sublease it or make it a, rent it to then put it on a listing. I could be persuaded about that, I suppose. But I just think that it absolutely has to be reined in because it does really undermine community health.
I mean, yeah, I agree that it should be regulated. And I, I mean, I guess it's just like being part of an HOA, you know, working with a lot of clients who are in HOAs. HOAs do a lot more of their own sort of govern, you know, governing than simply what, you know, how many pounds a dog can be. I mean, a lot of HOAs actually dictate, you know, what kind of additions to your house you could have, or, I mean, they do...
Kind of grill you can have. I mean, I know.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of governance there, and so trying to duplicate that with the city as a means to sort of reinforce it, I'm just, you know, I think there's a lot of logistical issues there and I'm not sure that I, and I also, you know, it's, I mean, maybe it's being in an HOA, you know, having a condo, it's like, why, differentiating the rights of someone who has a condo versus someone who has a single-family home, I just feel like that's a, you know, that's something we should be careful around.
I think it's discriminatory.
Yeah.
I think that could be discriminatory.
I don't, I think we...
It's hosting it, too. And a single-family home is more likely to host than a condominium is. And if you're hosting somebody, you're going to be aware that they're misbehaving. Whereas if you're just letting this agency over in San Francisco handle it all for you.
Well, just think of the number of ways in just planning regulations where we distinguish between a single-family home and a multifamily home. We discriminate in the way we treat them all the time.
But you're not discriminating to someone who can actually earn an income off of what, you're allowing one person to earn an income and not another.
Because it's a residential structure, not a commercial enterprise. It's a, it's a residentially zoned building. That's my point. If it was a commercial building, Stephen, I would totally agree with you. It's a residential purpose.
Sorry, there's case law on this, that the city regulates it as a land use.
So residential versus commercial?
Yes.
Thank you.
Correct.
No, it's all residential.
So when the city goes to regulate, we regulate it.
Yeah, but...
Planning regulations.
Yeah, so it's considered residential if it's a house, it's not, it's not viewed as a commercial structure. Or a commercial zone, I should say.
We're, how we, we get to decide how we're going to define the use of a short-term rental, whether it's something that is an allowed use in a residential zone, whether it's a prohibited use in a residential zone. So we have to think in terms of zoning when we craft regulations, we're not necessarily going to think of people.
But when we, but in our current definition of residential zone, it includes non-transient. That's non-transient right now.
Correct.
Yes.
I mean, it's also condominiums can be single-family homes. I mean, you can have a street of condominiums, I mean, that, so that's...
Sure, townhomes.
Or, no, even detached.
Detached, yeah.
So that's, I mean, so that's, you know, that's what I'm trying, you know?
It's not just the structure, though, because in those cases, usually in a condominium, you have the rights to all the common space. So I could still walk onto your property, which may be around your separate house.
Theoretically.
Right? I could. It's technically, even in those situations.
Or you might own your house and the, and the yard around it, and it's the streets or, you know, sidewalks, et cetera, that are the common spaces, so.
So, but I think the one thing you can say we agree on, and I don't, is we do believe that it should be regulated, if not outright prohibited. I think everyone, would you not agree that at least a consensus to see regulation rather than just keeping what we have?
I was just trying to see if there was something with consensus. But there's not, and so we'll go back and we'll consider everybody's comments, and it gets forwarded to the city council first for kind of their study session, and then we go back and we fit it into the planning and legal framework that it needs to go in to regulate it.
Can I just ask again, Charlie and staff, how many complaints or police actions related to this type of short-term rental have occurred in Emeryville?
None that I'm aware of.
I'm aware of one.
Yeah, this study doesn't have police data in it.
So, and it's important to note that police would go out for like a noise disturbance is what they would go, and that's how their calls would be tracked. And certainly, if the city were to allow vacation rentals and there was a noise issue, you would still call the police to deal with the conduct at the time creating the noise. Then there's the subsequent issue of whether it's civil or administrative enforcement against what would typically be the property owner as to whether they are using their property that's consistent with the planning regulations.
Well, I just have to say that I probably stand alone among the commissioners as being unconvinced that regulation is absolutely necessary in this subject.
So, yes, no consensus.
You've literally never experienced it.
No, I've done it myself.
Well, I think we got just about every possible point of view that there is to have on this topic from you all.
Well, it was funny, when I got the, when I got the call, I think I was, you know, I was running around in circles in my own mind, so I can see how that happens. Oh, sure, come on up, yeah.
I don't know if any of you are aware of what just happened in Oakland a couple of months ago, where homeowners did Airbnb, they interviewed the person that they thought would be staying there, who was a 40-year-old man, who was actually a front for an 18-year-old kid who threw himself a party. And had so many hundreds of kids, you know, screaming drunk, that the neighbors had to call, the police had to call the people that were on vacation. And when the people that were on vacation came home, their house was trashed, over $50,000 worth of damage with blood on the walls, furniture just broken, it's just trashed. So even interviewing somebody might not be the person that you're, that will be staying in your home, so something else to think about, too, because that's really bad.
Thank you, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Quick.
Sure.
Regarding common space, if you have, say, possibly 52 people cycling through one unit, we have 1,246 over at Watergate, and say we have 10, 15 going at a time, we've had as many as, what, 15 at a time?
Oh, yeah.
15 at a time that have been active. So that's keys that they have to our lobbies that they can get into our amenities, they're using our amenities, they don't register as they're supposed to if they were, say, a family friend that was coming and just staying at your place. They, you register them and then they get to use the amenities with you there, and some of them by themselves. But they, all those people with keys, they can make copies and come in whenever they want, and we've had a lot of problems with people using our swimming pool and so forth. We don't know how they got in there, we don't know how they got the key. So that's just more people having access to our property other than the people who actually legitimately live there. Thank you very much, I appreciate all your comments.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
And stay with us.
So, Charlie, I'd like to ask, is there a timeline for the capital improvement program administrative item?
Yes, there is. Under state law, the planning commission has to make a determination of consistency with the general plan at least 60 days prior to the city council's adopting the capital improvement program. And we are targeting June for, I think it's June, for adoption, which translates to a March decision by the planning commission. However, we would be more than willing to dispense with the staff presentation if you just want to cut right to the chase and...
Sure.
...take a vote on consistency. I assume you've all thoroughly read the staff report.
I could go along with that, but I just had a simple question on, under the housing category, they have the South Bay, Site B property as housing, and I was wondering, what if housing isn't proposed there? Does this preclude that from happening? Say someone wanted to put a office condominium on Site B. Is having this in our capital program under housing limit that ability or flexibility?
I'm not sure exactly what the project is, but I can tell you that Site B is zoned for mixed use with residential, it is a site on more than one acre... It is a site on more than one acre, less than five acres, which means that it must include residential and non-residential uses unless the commission makes a determination that a mix of uses is infeasible.
Okay, so that answers my question.
I have a question, Charlie.
Yes?
Is, I see about the North Hollis Undergrounding District, is there a, is there a price tag associated with that?
I'm sure there is. We have not included the costs of all of these projects in this report since that's not in the commission's purview. But we have a dollar figure for it.
It's 14 million.
And was that added because there's a surplus?
It was added because we have what are referred to as boomerang funds, if you're familiar with those. There was sufficient boomerang funds to be able to fund this project, apparently.
Can we add to the capital improvement program or switch things around at this point?
Well, that's not really what's before you. What's before you is to make a determination of general plan consistency with the projects that are listed here. You can certainly make a suggestion that we can pass on to the city council.
Okay.
Can I ask you another question following Commissioner Keller on Site B? So I know that the long-term, long-range plan was denied. What's the status of that, just so I?
Well, the status of it is that I believe the State Department of Finance has now finally approved our long-range property management plan. So we are free to go forward and do something with Site B. Plan is to issue an RFP for a developer. I mean, first, we would have to have the city council tell us what exactly they want to put in that RFP. What kind of a development are they looking for there? As I said, under the zoning, it would be mixed use with residential, high-density presumably. We would then issue an RFP and see what kind of responses we got and then ultimately make an agreement with a developer and develop the site.
So it's under your category, though, as projects to develop affordable housing? Because it's either, is it an all affordable housing property? Are you expecting some percentage to be?
I expect it would be a percentage.
Okay, that's my question.
So, a question.
Sure.
So Charlie, the, on page two, second paragraph, you talk about the budget for these 80 projects that are to be funded between 2014 and 2019 to be $106 million. Is that correct?
That's what it says.
Yeah. And then that of the 80 projects, 76 have been funded at $96 million. And the, so the difference there is about $10 million and four projects. Is there, are those, is there sufficient funds in that $10 million to fund those remaining four projects?
I don't know the answer to that, sorry.
Okay.
But once again, the funding is not really the commission's purview.
Right.
So our options right now are either to approve or not approve the, the capital, the draft capital improvement program is consistent with the general plan?
Yes. And if you, if you think that it's not, I would suggest it would be very helpful to us for you to flag those projects that you believe are not and then approve it with respect to the others.
If that's going to screw up your schedule and timeframe?
It might cause us to have to modify the CIP.
I mean, yeah, honestly, it's not that I don't think there are, it's not that I see anything in here that I don't, you know, I don't think is in conformance with the general plan. It's more that I would love to figure out a way to get some funding in place for a gateway at Powell and Shell Mound and a, and the painting of the water tower. And I think a couple million dollars or less could go a long way there and have a huge impact on the identity of, you know, kind of the claiming of identity for Emeryville, much more so than the $14 million. It'll go towards the undergrounding when, you know, we will still continue to have a large portion of our utilities above ground. And in some ways, it kind of is part of the character of Emeryville as well.
I definitely think that would be a subject for long discussion. I feel undergrounding incrementally is getting our things underground. There's a lot of the city that is now underground. And when I look at above-ground and underground, I'd rather see the whole city underground.
But what do you think of breaking out $2 million of the 14?
I don't think we have that option at this point in time.
No, as a recommendation.
I think it's something we can recommend.
A recommendation.
Okay. I would, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this, that this is in conformance with our general plan. And then we can add customer comments on that.
I don't, I don't see anything in here that I think is inconsistent with the general plan. But there's a few things that I think are maybe in the wrong categories, like the storm drain should be in with the facilities and infrastructure rather than the streets, streetscape. But aside from that, I think it's consistent.
If I could just comment, Chair Gunkel, on your suggestions. I believe you are aware that the city is embarking on a public art master plan, right?
I am.
And that, I'm pretty sure that will explicitly include gateways. I'm not sure about the water tower. But we're, you know, in the midst of developing that master plan now. And there's opportunity for comment on it, which maybe you've already done. I would expect that that plan might result in some suggestions for some future capital improvement projects as well.
I mean, I agree. I think that's a bigger picture item and it covers a lot of components, everything from paintings in the, in the, you know, in City Hall to, you know, bus art, bus stop art, et cetera. And I think if there is a way to recommend to city council that a couple million dollars be allocated for Gateway and Water Tower, I think it would, you know, and I, I just think it could go a long way. And I think it, that that in and of itself is sort of a small piece to the mass, you know, to the possible public art master plan. And I think it, it, it's separate in a certain way in that it, it's very much about community identity. I think a lot, I've spoken with the Public Art Committee and, and their focus is primarily, I can't say it so much about community identity as I can say it's about, you know, bringing art into the community.
May I suggest that you take a vote on the motion that's on the floor?
Oh, yeah, no, I agree.
But then, if you wish, you could make another motion that's just simply a sense of the commission that is what you've just stated. And if that passes, then we can pass that suggestion on to the council.
Certainly. Well, I think we already have a motion and a second.
Yes, a motion by Commissioner Keller and Chair, second, Vice Chair Keller, rather, and a second by Commissioner Bowders. Okay, on that motion, Commissioner Banta?
Aye.
Commissioner Bowders?
Aye.
Commissioner Cardoza?
Aye.
Commissioner Donaldson?
Aye.
Commissioner Kang is absent. Vice Chair Keller?
Aye.
Chair Gunkel?
Aye.
Six ayes. You have determined that the CIP is consistent with the general plan. We'll pass that on to the city council.
So, yes, I guess I'd like to make a motion to recommend to city council to allocate $2 million for Gateway at Powell and Shell Mound and painting of the water tower.
Add them from existing funds or additional funds?
Find a way to add them from existing funds.
May I ask for clarification? When you say at Powell and Shell Mound, you referring to the overpass?
Yes, at the base of the overpass.
Where the electric rainbow art is to be installed?
Well, that's happening, that's under, that's the underpass.
You're saying like on the bridge?
Over the bridge.
Oh, on top of the bridge.
Yes.
On the bridge where it goes.
So I guess, is that, is that Shell Mound there or Christie?
That's Powell over Shell Mound. You're right, right before the train track.
Yeah.
Where Powell goes over Shell Mound Street on the bridge.
Is there some image of what this thing might look like?
I've provided images previously. But I think it would be a public, it would be a competition that would, could be decided upon by, could be the Public Art Commission or, or Planning Commission.
So, just to be.
It's at the base of the bridge, not on the bridge.
Yeah, on the base of the bridge.
So basically at the Christie intersection.
Yeah, Christie, so Christie.
He's talking about the lazy boy.
Christie, okay. Got it.
I generally would support doing anything that would give us some gateways and some heart and et cetera. But I think that the capital improvement program has gone through an iterative process starting in 2014. And I think what we're doing is we're kind of throwing something in at them that really hasn't been vetted. I really don't know what, I mean, I used to love the water tower when it had even the Sierra Designs on it. And I think we're missing an opportunity by not doing something on that. I think by us making a request to just throw $2 million at this and circumventing the system that we already have in place for the capital improvement.
Well, it's not circumventing it because it still gets vetted. City council will still be vetting and deciding whether or not to.
And, but then how do we get that $2 million? Do we take away projects from that?
Yeah, I mean, we would be recommending that they find the funds for it. And then they could kind of, because, you know, I mean, what, $2 million out of a $14 million project just means like a couple, you know, one more, one block doesn't get undergrounded right this moment.
So do you, is this suggestion that you're making part of a broader plan of, of identity enhancement for the city?
It is, it is. And I, at one point, I've, I mean, I've posed it where there'd be also a gateway on San Pablo at the entrance of the city over near 37th. And then monument sign on Hollis as you come sort of back behind Ashby Lumber, sort of gateways, monuments. But I think these two are really the key. I think the water tower, if it said Emeryville on it in some kind of artistic way, would be, would have a, you know, very significant impact on the community. It'd be kind of like a, I mean, even the T-shirts that are being made right now about Emeryville, they're showing the water tower silhouette. It's kind of a, it's, it's sort of an opportunity that we, I mean, my understanding is that the owners of the water tower are open to it being decorated or painted as long as the city's the one doing it.
And maintaining it.
Yeah, and maintaining it, yes.
Well, I mean, I'm very supportive of anything that enhances the identity of the city. I'd very much appreciate having the time to understand what I might be casting a vote for $2 million is.
Yeah. Well, I mean, at this point, we're not casting the vote to actually make it happen. We're just casting a vote to recommend it to city council and let them kind of stew on it.
Well, I would like the city council to consider it, so I would second your motion.
Are you?
Call the vote?
Done? Are you ready to vote?
We got a first and a second.
Okay. On this motion, Commissioner Banta?
I'll vote aye on this.
Commissioner Bowders?
Strongly support what you're saying, Brad, and the, the need for public art. I don't think this is the right vehicle. I'll abstain.
Okay, Commissioner Cardoza?
I'll abstain.
Commissioner Donaldson?
Aye.
Vice Chair Keller?
I'm just kind of curious, Charlie, we're voting on something that isn't on the agenda. Is this really a proper thing?
It's just a sense, it's, it's on the agenda.
It's, we're talking about capital improvement projects and their consistency.
If the overall thing is to recommend that they look at, you know, I don't, I don't want to push forward a thing that we take $2 million from the undergrounding and give it to this. If we want to ask them to look at doing some gateway projects, including Christie and Powell Street and the water tower, I would support that. I don't want to take away money that's been already earmarked, that has been vetted and studied for something else and actually has been collected for a particular job. So if it is that, that's what you're saying, that you want to ask council to take $2 million from the undergrounding and put it towards this project? I can't support that. If you want to ask them, look at doing this and move it forward a little further, I could support that.
That's basically what I'm saying.
Okay. So if that's what we're doing, we're not particularly telling them to take this amount of money from here. We just want to, I would support that. We give that an aye.
Okay, and Chair Gunkel?
Aye.
So we have four ayes and two abstentions, which is sufficient to pass the motion. So we will convey that to the city council along with your recommend, along with your determination of consistency.
All right. Commissioner comments? All right. Let's get out of here. Meeting is adjourned.
Before I change my mind.